Everybody, welcome to the June 5th City of Port Angeles Council. So we will begin with the roll call please.
Mayor Brook.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Dexter.
Here.
Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember Kit.
Here.
Councilmember Merrick should be with us shortly. Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Strom and Lauren.
Here.
Attorney Manager West.
Present.
Attorney Moore.
Here.
Thank you. And let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to define the United States of America and to declare it with which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and everlasting.
Great, we have a couple ceremonial matters and we'll begin with the Maritime Festival. Jim, did you want to come here?
Yes. We have several, a couple members up here. Maybe that's my kid. Actually, this guy is more responsible for the Maritime Festival than I am, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
All right, well, thank you, welcome. Let me read the proclamation here. The proclamation for Angeles Maritime Festival. Whereas a variety of organizations such as the Port of Port Angeles, Port Angeles Yacht Club, Chamber of Commerce, and the North Olympic History Center, as well as numerous businesses and local individuals, have participated to create and produce the first annual Port Angeles Maritime Festival at locations across the Port Angeles waterfront. And whereas the Maritime Festival is a celebration of the rich history and the promising future of maritime activities in Port Angeles and the North Olympic Peninsula. And whereas the inaugural festival will celebrate maritime traditions new and old with live music, ships, exhibits, demonstrations, tours, boat trucks, face painting, and fun for the whole family on June 9th and June 10th. And whereas festivals festivities will include the arrival of the Ling Bong Washington, a full-scale replica of the original ship that in 1788 became the first American vessel to make landfall on the west coast of North America, and the Hawaiian Chieftain, designed by naval architect Raymond H. Richards to replicate early colonial passenger ships that traded among the Atlantic coastal cities and towns. And whereas other notable boats, ships to grace the Port Angeles harbor will include the famed tugboat Comanche, the Puget Sound Pilot Boat, the United States Coast Guard Scream Vessel, and the Wicked Racing Sprint Boats in Northern. And whereas on Saturday, June 9th, there will be a ribbon cutting ceremony to celebrate the new marine floats at City Pier, followed by the U.S. Navy Band Performance, and later in the day, a Coast Guard Sea Rescue Demonstration in Port Angeles Harbor. And whereas festival goers can discover the beauty of the Port Angeles harbor from the vantage point of a kayak or join a narrated driving tour through the port of Port Angeles' log yard, marine terminals, and boat manufacturing facility. Now therefore I, Sissy Brook, Mayor, on behalf of the seat council of Port Angeles, do hereby thank the sponsors and all of those who have contributed time, effort, and support to make this Port Angeles Maritime Festival a reality. So thank you so much. This is for you.
So to all the volunteers that are organizing this, and there's a lot of people behind Jim and I doing this, thank you. I also want to thank the city. Without getting the city docs in this year, we would not have the Lady Washington or the Hawaiian Chieftain here. Last time they were here was 2011, so this is instrumental to making this go. They're arriving Thursday night, by the way. They'll be open for tours Friday afternoon, and they'll be doing adventure sales throughout the weekend, so come on down. You can still buy tickets for their sales, and it'll be a fun event. So thank you again. The ribbon cutting is at 10 o'clock. Opening ceremonies, ribbon cutting, and then festivities begin right after that. We go 10 to 4 on Saturday, and 11 to 4 on Sunday. Saturday is focus at City Pier. Sunday is down at the Marina, the east end of Boheaven Marina. So come to both. There'll be a bus running back and forth to get you around. Ignore the rain, it'll be a fun day.
Thank you so much. All right, the second one, did you want to come up here, Jim?
Come on, ladies. Serotimus, come on down.
The new Serotimus, Port Angeles New Serotimus International. Bob of Port Angeles is coming down to accept this proclamation, so ladies, come on down. We have a week of festivities for Pink Up Port Angeles. This is an annual event, and there are events all week long, and we're just so excited to be recognized by the City of Port Angeles once again. And when this proclamation is read, on the week, I believe, what is the exact date of Pink Up?
16th, 16th.
16th, 23rd. Port Angeles changes its name to Port Angeles. So I'll let our mayor read the proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you ladies for coming. So proclamation in recognition of Pink Up Port Angeles Week of June 16 through June 23rd, 2018. Whereas cancer is a word that spreads fear throughout family and community, and whereas cancer is one of the most devastating words to hear from a healthcare provider, and whereas cancer is a disease that has touched the lives of countless people worldwide, and whereas cancer is a word that brings people together in love and support to fight and to find a cure, and whereas cancer is a disease, warning, threat, opportunity for research and cure, and whereas cancer is a war we are fighting and winning many rounds, and whereas cancer is a word that we want in the history book to be feared no longer. Whereas Serotimus International of Port Angeles invites the entire community to join together and dedicates this week to fight cancer through awareness, advocacy, and action, turning Port Angeles pink. We therefore shall be known as Pink Angeles for these important days celebrating the success of Operation Uplift and their commitment to bring assistance to cancer patients and survivors. Now therefore I, Sissy Brook, Mayor, on behalf of the city council of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim the week of June 16 through June 23rd, Pink Up Port Angeles Week in Port Angeles, and change the name of Port Angeles to Pink Angeles, and call upon the citizens to work towards dedicating this week to fight cancer.
Thank you all, thank you. Thank you all for the support you've given us through the years. We've been here since 1983, and we strive to help people without any cost, without any responsibility other than just to accept our help. And the Serotimus Club have so valently been raising money for Operation Uplift for eight years. And so, come out and golf if you're a golfer, and if...
Even if you're not?
Yeah, I do it all the time. But if you can, if you're a business owner and want to be a sponsor, all you have to do is give us a call, let us know that you want to partake. Down the line there, always, oh, right here, is the founder of Pink Up, and her name is Lynda Board.
A shock.
We always talk about Operation Uplift. We'd be happy to bring you into the fold, give you a sign, get your name, try to give your business some exposure as helping this great need, and it is a great need. Over 300 people a year are helped by Operation Uplift, and so you can see it for as big a capacity.
Thank you so much for coming.
And thank you for Serotimus for all you do. Thank you.
All right, folks, moving on. It is time for our public comment period, so we will begin with the folks that have signed on the list, and then we'll open them. So the first person we have here is Devon Gray, the voting man.
Hi, my name is Devon Graywald, and I live at 438 Lopez, Port Angeles. I am a member of the newly formed seven-member tree advisatory council. The tree advisatory council is formed to work with the city to help manage its urban trees and looks forward to working with the city in areas of policy and education. The tree advisatory council has been looking at the process regarding the proposed removal of the sequoia tree in Lyons Park. The tree advisatory council appreciates the city working on developing a policy and a process, and has been looking at policies in nearby cities. The council has voted to ask the city to not cut down the tree for six months, so that we can have a chance to provide input on the process. The council does not see anything showing that the tree presents an immediate threat that would require action in the next six months, and we want to make sure alternatives are given, given adequate consideration, and loss ecosystem services of our status. The tree advisatory council will be sending a written letter to the city council. So thank you very much, and glad that's over with, and we'll go home and pet my cats. Thank you.
Next person is Thomas Minsell.
Hello, Mayor, hello, council, hello commissioners, police chief and fire chief. This is an update on the homeless situation. They have breakfast and they have lunch, known to Salvation Army, five days a week. They get the Wednesday nights over on the 13th Street Church, Friday nights at the 7th Street Church, and Sundays at the mental health at 12 o'clock. Other than that, I'll let you use your imagination with a few. Two words I wish that they'd leave this tongue, of you resisting and trespassing. People have nowhere to go but to go to the bathroom, they have nowhere to go to go frotten eggs, they have nowhere to go to lay down, they have nowhere to go to walk and sit, because they're only asked to move on, or in terms of the worst things in that world, you have your imagination on that one. But I'm very concerned, because these are people, these are friends, these are people that have grabbed rights in their life. I've always said, I was going to come here and say, you guys just drive on, sweet, grab one, get them in your car, and take them home. They're interesting people, they really are. And there's been a lot, I'm going to be truly honest, it's going to be a long time before our police department and these people have any kind of relief or understanding or even forgiveness, because, man, I've heard some stories that just pull me away. But I'll leave that up to the two people here, because they are brothers and sisters, they need help. And thank God for the federal authorities, and for the state authorities, and for the county for busting these roads. I'm telling you what, you guys are in war. Do not pat yourselves on the back. This is a war we're fighting here, okay? Keep my friends off this stuff. And it comes in as readily available on the streets and in the bathrooms, you know, the utility ton of bulk. Some things have been taken care of, and I thank you for doing it. I think somebody should write a letter to this council, put in an agency, tell them thank you. Keep it up. We got the names, they last time, they want some front column, they're like rats, so you gotta get with it. And I want to thank you, Mr. Moran, because when I talk to people about the situation, last time that I was going on with all the noise that went on, Tom, it was incited, and thank you very much for that. I really appreciate that. I think a lot of people in town do, because it is obnoxious and that's me. I'll let you guys be, I'll have to come back here, I'll talk to the people on the street, my friends, just need to help these people, man. Thank you.
Mr. Minsell, could you please give us your address as well?
Yeah, 1702 Melody Circle. I'm a United States citizen, a veteran of the United States Army, and I reside in Port Angeles, Washington. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, Susan Hilgrin.
Hello, my name's Susan Hilgrin, I live at 12 Pierce Road. Nathan, I said Chinese water torture, so I'm back, leaving trash cans, porta potties, Sharps containers. But I do want to thank you guys, because I really feel like we're going in a direction, and that's good. I'm sorry about the city that was attacked about the needle. Definitely not your fault, it was on the sidewalk, you don't know if the needle came from a diabetic, or somebody just giving the dog a shot, so if you don't know, so it wasn't your fault. Homelessness is alive and well, and although the point in time count says there's 100 homeless, I could give you 300 under the age of 35 that I deal with. So we really need to deal with what reality is. As a community, we need to make plans for housing. I don't know who makes it, but we need to, and we need regular houses. We need apartments, we need Oxford houses, we need dorm style, we need places for people to live who can't live in a house. That is a reality. We also need to make sure there's options for services. Over 35 need places to take showers, and places to get food and clothing, and to just be real people. We also need to figure out some kind of prevention of homelessness. I'm not sure what it would look like, but I'm sure we could figure out some plans, help the kids in high school, talk with them about, this is what happens if it looks like you're going to lose your job, let's do some prevention stuff. It really feels like we are going in a good direction, and I just appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michael Clements.
I live at 1217 7th Street, Port Angeles. I'd like from my city, to have a climate action, there was a likely threat to the city, possible in their interests.
Michael, can you hit that speaker up a little higher, so I can...
We haven't, granted, I'd like for it to be identified. The Marshall Adams in Norfolk, Virginia are dealing with repercussions of our changing climate today, and we should discover what we're against and what we might be able to do about it. Please, investigate the necessity of the climate action plan.
You know what, but it's definitely on our work plan, so yes, we'll be working on it. Thank you. Ellen Fletchett.
Sorry, sissy, I have to laugh, because my name is Fletchett. Ellen Fletchett, 204 Columbus Avenue, and I'm here to speak to also encourage the city to take a big look and plan, and invite people around the table to help in planning for the climate action changes that we're seeing every single minute of our day, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm starting to get your name wrong.
I feel like you need to change this thing, every time I come down here, I don't...
Bob Reerland. Reelund, I should know that, too.
Bob Reelund, 520 East 10th Street, Port Angeles. And it's okay, I've been pronouncing your name incorrectly also, so you work first and won't be the last. So I've been here in April and May to talk about 100% fossil-free Port Angeles. People might think, okay, Bob, that's nice, but what have you done to reduce your carbon footprint? Fair question. So when I moved to Port Angeles in '04, I decided to move into the city limits so I could walk or bicycle to just about everything I needed. Over the past two years, I've reduced my driving to under 3,900 miles a year. At that rate, my 1990 Toyota pickup will outlast me. When I bought that house, it turned out there was no insulation in the walls. I gutted the house and put in insulation. It did have double pane windows, except for one, I replaced that in the remodel, I added insulation to the attic, I took advantage of the city's rebate on heat pumps and replaced my electric forced air furnace. House is much more comfortable. I added solar panels, after I got the inheritance from my mother's home. My neighbor and I purchased a front loading washer and dryer, low energy, low water use, and this time of year, I don't even use the dryer, I dry the clothes outside. I take the Navy showers, I turn the water on, get wet, turn it off, soap up, turn it back on, rinse off. I use public transportation whenever I can, whenever it's reasonably convenient, and the straight shot bus is great for those that haven't used it. I have the old farts card, so I can get to Seattle and back for less than what it would cost me to drive just one way. Is this enough? No, it's not. There's still things I can do. And certainly, it's clear that not everyone can physically or financially do the kinds of things that I've done. I've done this without having any real plan, but the city can't do that. The city does need a plan, and it needs to prepare for the climate change that's coming down the pipe.
Thank you. Ingrid Carne.
Ingrid Carne, 316 South Cherry. And I'm sorry, this is the fourth time I've come up with the same subject, which is legal campgrounds for the homeless. But this time, I have a map, the homeless mark, the places that they thought would be good for legal campgrounds. Just remember that every one of these campgrounds needs trash receptacles, porta potties, and Sharps containers. The last, I was reminded by one of the homeless, that they need that. I did also want to tell you that the United Nations Refugee Agency recommends one latrine for 50 people in emergency situations, and one latrine for 20 people once the camps, the refugee camps have been established. I think we have possibly three latrines that are open, bathrooms that are open for the public at night, so we're way below that. And since it has come up twice in the past month, I feel that I need to point out that not all sectors of our society feel comfortable calling the police. Many members of the homeless community do not feel comfortable calling the police. This is not just a Port Angeles problem, it is a national problem. In fact, I have no doubt that it is because of this problem that some of Lyons Smith and Gray here.
Thank you. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Tom Biggins.
Tom Biggins, 141 Columbus Avenue, resident of Port Angeles, and I would like to voice my support for a comprehensive climate action plan at the city level. I think it's important for all of us to be thinking about climate change at the level of individuals, my bike is locked up next to Potts', and also at the level of municipalities like Port Angeles. This is our time to take responsibility for what will likely be seen in the future as the most important event of our times, which is climate change. So I hope that leadership here can look that challenge in the eyes, see it for what it is, based on what all the science has been telling us, and take the responsible course of action for the people who are coming after us, and for the people who are living here right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. All right, so we've got a couple more minutes. Anybody who would like to come and speak to the council, please go up to the mic and state your name and address, so it's open public comment. Anybody out there? All right, well, in that case, this closes our public comment, our first public comment period. Onto item D, which is the late items. I've had one item that I'd like, actually, two items. One is an article that came out that I'd like to discuss, and I will add that as I too, other considerations. And then, I know that we wanted to...
What is the topic?
The topic is racism. So there was a Seattle Globalist article that came out about a man and his family that came to visit Port Angeles and how they were treated. So this has already come out, it's come out in the press, and so I think that we need to just speak to it.
Is there some way that you could get his copy, so we could all be apprised of the topic before we put it on the agenda? I'm not familiar with this, and before we actually discuss it at the council meeting, I really think we need to be apprised of the topic, of the subject and the information.
It's a short article, so I can just read it out loud at the beginning of the article.
And I will try to make sure that we do that in the future.
Well, it's not customary that we could throw out a topic without informing councils ahead or getting the information ahead, I'm just saying that's normal for the future.
No, and I apologize for not doing that. This, I guess, was in the box two days ago, two days ago, so, but I will definitely make sure that everybody gets copies in their mailbox. The second thing I'd like to bring up is the lodging tax, because I know that we closed it, I know Biggins got some information for us, and so we can discuss as to when, the times we can use it, things like that, just procedure-wise on the lodging tax. Anything else, have any other items that they would like to add?
I'd like to add a little bit of items, I, Section I as well, and that's concerning the National Research Service Center, people development webinar, and the possibility of attending that.
That is already on the integration L1. So with that, we are onto the consent agenda. So I need to pull out item five, as there's such a conflict of interest with that, with the tribe, but is there any items that anybody would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, so, see now, let me read the consent agenda. One, the city council minutes for May 15th, 2018. The expenditure report from May 5th to the 18th, 2018, in the amount of $1,536,445.62. The Calum County Boundary Review Board appointment, the professional services agreement with third-party administrator, Bergandonian, the 2018 poll testing project, and the amendments to the contract with the Natural Resource Results LLC. So council, what would you like to do with this? I know that we approved the consent agendas, right?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion on the table, and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye, no. You need a chance to get back in the swing of things. I say yes, whatever.
Thank you. It's unanimous, then.
I just wanted to make a comment. I've been trying to think about this with memos around professional services, but I'd like to see us consider why we're doing professional services out of the city's own staffing and potentially include something that addresses that in the council memo, so that we understand why we're not doing it in-house. And ideally, to me, it would also include perhaps a percentage of how much of an equivalent full-time employee would have that skill, or what skills we're lacking. This is a case where this is a very specific skill set, and it's clearly why we're doing it as professional services out of-house. But if we start to collect that information every time we do professional services contract, we could then look at, well, what are we hiring out? And might it make sense for us to hire a staff member who has those skills? Perhaps we can analyze that more into the future with the idea, I mean, we have a lot of, by local, and that's a program we have, and we could do that with our own professional services as well, potentially, if it looks. So I'd just like to throw that out as we think about how we do the professional services numbers, and if that might be possible to start to improve.
I would like to address that with our new council member, Councilmember Sherman Warren. This topic has come up at past councils many times. And so if I just could possibly request that you could discuss this with our city manager and our department heads, and then this discussion has taken place several times on our councils in the recent past. So I think rather than reinventing the wheel every two years or something with a new council, maybe if you could give us further information, and then we can discuss this. Because our staff, we, as Mr. West can tell you, when we have specific needs, we, of course, particular projects, particular needs, we call in consultants, but we have had general discussions, and maybe it would be time to do that again. But first of all, maybe if you could just discuss with the city manager, if he could answer some of your questions.
Thanks, I have.
All right. So moving on then, on number five, except I will recuse myself, and I will turn it over to a deputy now. Thank you. Turn my mic on. Okay, number five on the consent agenda is the amendment to the Heckman lease agreement. And I understand that Jack Heckman is here this evening. Would you like to come up?
And Madam Deputy Mayor, while Mr. Heckman is going to be able to podium to give us a representation, I just wanted to introduce the topic. The topic is for an additional lease amendment for a three-month period in recognition of Mr. Heckman occupying two properties at this time, trying to sustain his businesses in both locations, recognizing that he had a pending purchase in the area.
My name is Jack Heckman. I'm a project guy, and I'm a project manager of a car, and doing this for a time in Port Angeles. Our family, their business is active for a third generation, or at the moment, a few older businesses. We've been down the waterfront for, this is our 30th year, at the old, very modern process street from the Calhoun Ferry. It's almost been around since the oil trenders started to purchase property there. We had a mine in the home. And so we have a mine in the home. We purchased properties, there's actually seven properties between Laurel and Lincoln Street and Beet Street, which many of you have seen that, which we wouldn't be asking, was purchased for the right, it was supposed to go in and be a condo, but then we backed out. And it's been vacant for over 10 years. And we purchased it, it was a mess, very lumpy and messy, so we cleaned it up, and we'll be leaving our businesses up there as soon as possible. We've got a couple of pictures of what the most recent things that happened. And this building right here is part of the purchase. It was the old senior services center, much recently. This is actually not even before, these are brand-new windows right here. The windows were all broken. And as you can see, right now, we've got all-new windows, all-new paint. The lines have been re-fixed. This area here, we cut out to put in, it was budget block, ready to let in soon. It's also on the east side of the building, will also show that. Next to that, well, let's see, we got the pictures, but I haven't seen the picture yet.
So Jack, can you just play it?
Okay. Okay. I guess these are some of the pictures inside of the new office. And when we started the construction, we had to put in all-new flooring, all-new paint, lighting will have to be redone, all plumbing was poorly plugged. We had to go through the race tube and clean out all the plumbing that had just been sitting stagnant for 10 years. Had to do some electrical work as well, and then just basically clean up on the inside. So this is kind of how it's moving during construction, while we're putting this new flooring. Some more flooring stuff you can kind of see as we're progressing. Now it's moving in this direction. We actually moved our counter that we had done by Bob Stokes last year in recent, and we had to put it in through one of the windows because it wouldn't fit through the doors. So when we had the windows out, we had to move it up there early. So right now downtown, we're operating off the car cable with our computers. But that's kind of what's happening there. That old safe right up there, it was cool, it's from the early 1900s. We brought it up, it's been downtown on forever. So we got that inside there, that was quite a job, and I must have been pretty interested in this. Some of the office spaces that we'll have, that's the front entrance coming in. Well, let me just show you a little bit. If you see just to the right of the property, one of the other buildings, just to the right is the car wash, that is one of the works, actually. And we should start construction at that with them, the next couple of weeks, we're just waiting for the time when that city can complete building. It's going to be really cool. All brand-new equipment. Two days, and it will be for detailing the cars. There's going to be an automatic, end-of-day automatic car wash that's going in from company number seven. We actually have to, then, one of the days, add a little bit to fix 36 feet, put it in. But it's all really neat, same yard, so then there'll be two more, basically, the south side of the style. So yeah, that will have all the roof, all the paint. It's really, I think, a real benefit to the community, kind of, as sometimes you need a lot of car washing in there, and so we can do a little bit of that.
About the corner?
Excuse me? If we're breaking any, I'll give you nothing on that. We're having, a lot of you might have remembered, they did some excavation there because of the contamination and so on. They did a major excavation there. And we purchased, we found out that there is still contamination in the ground part. There's a feeling that some of that may have come from off-site, either from Arco Station or potentially Process Street. And Arco Station just did a fairly major cleanup there, dug up the parking lot, did some more work. So we've given it a little bit of time, and the process right now, remodeling the wells. If we can get a clean monitoring of the wells, then it requires four clean consecutive quarters in order to get what they call a learning of factor action. And that allows you to basically, with the property, banks will not go in and do something to the property. So we're hoping that this monitoring that we're going to be doing here very, very soon will be a good one. And if not, we continue to monitor those wells until we can figure out, you know, get a clean oil, basically, as well. So it will sit literally a minimum of one year. It's going to take, like I said, four consecutive quarters of monitoring to be able to do anything with the property. The other two buildings, if you recall, there was a little drive-through restaurant, and we're hoping to find somebody who would like to do that. We have someone who's doing the old video slash store right now that we're working with, but hoping they might be able to clear it and model that as well. But however, the main concern right now is to be able to do our businesses as soon as possible, taking care of that sales and that, and we need to move out of there soon. And we're hoping to do that in the next couple of months.
Chamber knows, we can do a repackaging.
Great, yeah, yeah. I don't have an exact date, I wish I did. All the contractors are extremely busy in town right now. And until we have the permits, we can't give them a role. So we're just hoping that, and we'll see when we can start construction. All the equipment's ordered, all the contractors in place, we just have to have a little play with it and start with it.
Any questions or any comments? Thank you so much.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I move to approve the amendment to the Heckman lease agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the lease amendment with minor modifications if necessary.
Second.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Get those. Motion passes.
You're doing a quick one. Is it okay if I make a quick, is it okay if I make a quick comment while we're waiting on our new? We would just like to say we're appreciative of your patience as this process goes forward. We've heard a lot as a council on the limits and things that are in the way of developments like this, and we know that that's something that you guys are working through. But it's great to see business leadership in our area to rehabilitate some of these old properties. So thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, public hearing number one. So the Capitol facilities, Transportation Improvement Plan.
Good evening, council. This is the second reading and the second public hearing on the Capitol Facilities Plan. There is a document on your DAS for proposed addition to the plan. It was not included in tonight's, and not included in the attachment made, but should we decide to add the project, that will be the final detailed document that is published and distributed. We're asking for any public comment or concerns about the plan, and would like to have the council, open the public hearing, conduct the second hearing, and also adopt the 2019 through 2024 Capitol Facilities Plan. Thank you.
Council, if I can just add to that, relative to the additional item presented on your DAS, the city does have interest in looking at and doing additional analysis on a bio-solids paralysis process that may greatly benefit our waste order treatment plan. However, we do want to do some additional analysis on it, but in order to avert additional process between now and next year's Capitol Facilities Plan, we want to go ahead and use the opportunity of the public hearing tonight, as well as the Capitol Facilities Plan process, to introduce it now. It will be introduced to the parking lot, recognizing that the additional analysis needs to be done before it's removed from the parking lot, as well as knowing that we do not anticipate that the funding will be coming locally. It's something where we would be seeking state and federal grants for that opportunity if it seemed appropriate to be more beneficial to the overall city process. Be happy to answer additional questions on that.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? And actually, I do. Everybody back there, if you will hear everything, is everybody speaking a little bit? Just wanted to go over check there. Okay.
All right, so Madam Mayor, I would just, could I just get just a further short explanation of this? I learned about it today for the first time. I think it's an excellent idea. I believe Councilmember Sherman Warren brought forth the information, is that correct?
Yeah, but I shouldn't get credit for it. It sounds like other people have been working on it, I just heard about it over the weekend.
Okay, well, I just heard about this, and since I don't have a desire to delve as deeply into our waste-solids-based matter as this, I appreciate people who do. I think this would be beneficial to the city, and I'm grateful to the people who want to work so hard in solid ways and bring forward something that's beneficial. Thank you.
And I would like to give Darlene Shanfield some credit. She, this lady right here, is one that is able to get everybody together to be able to discuss this bio-force potentially, and so having, for us to have a better solution to deal with our bio-solids rather than mixing with the compost. So thank you for that. All right, council. So let's open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item, please step up to the microphone and talk to us. Great. Yes, and, oh, that's okay, that's, there's, yeah, no problem. So, yeah, so please, and this is for the whole Capitol Facilities Plan. Both Capitol Facilities and the Transportation Improvement Plan.
Darlene Shanfield and I, you want my address?
Yes, please.
901 Met School, Road in Squim. Thank you for the recognition. Actually, Sissy and I and Dan McKean have talked for about six years now about looking for alternatives and compost that we have now from the sewage sludge. Like any other community across the country and the world, these contain 90,000 chemicals, a lot of pathogens. And when sewage treatment plants were built, they were not built to handle these, they didn't even know what really was going in to the treatment plants, and more and more has built up over the years. And more and more communities around the world and businesses have looked and are still looking for different technologies to do better and not put all the waste into the compost and land that we applied and put it on farms for our food. And this is a particularly interesting one. Someone, Dan, once said, "Bring me something." And so I brought this because I had visited the facility in California last year. And it's a very simple operation, I won't describe it, somebody else can. And very cost-effective and a very small footprint, and cuts out a lot of costs. I think it would be silly if they're now paying out to keep the facility going and trucking waste to land, well, it's not going to land, but it's going up to your, it is going up to us. So, thank you very much for considering that. I think there's some other things we might want to talk about that are related to this over time. Thank you, Nate, and Dan and Sissy for being willing to listen and take part in the discussion, Mr. Burke. And we will hope that some good concerns...
Thanks. Thank you. And one of the positives, if this should be the way we go, is that we have some bio trial that is actually supposed to be helpful for the garden. It goes, you know, can you draw it still, please? Hi, council. Oh, anybody else in the audience who would love to speak to this topic? To both the Capitol Plaza and the Press Press? Not the Capitol, sorry, Capitol Facilities Plan, not the Capitol. I know, I did. All right, I guess seeing none, I guess this closes the second public hearing. All right, I guess seeing none, I guess this closes the second public hearing on the capital facilities plan and the transportation improvement plan for 2019 to 2024. So, council, is there any discussion?
One quick question, since folks have been raising the subject. Mr. Delacat, restroom replacement program, seventy-five thousand a year. Is that what it costs to replace each one of those in succession? Or is that the buildup?
Correct. It's to build up, depending on the location and the size of the restroom that we want to put in. So this year, we have made seventy-five thousand. So at the end of this year, starting in the beginning next year, we'll start the planning phase. And we'll get an additional seventy-five thousand rollover. So we have about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of work for the first restroom.
What is it to replace that?
Uh, it depends on the size. I would say about one twenty-five. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? So how would you guys like to proceed? Let me read the ordinance. It's the resolution. The resolution of the city councils, the, a resolution of the city council of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the city capitals facility plan for 2019 to 2024, which includes the city's transportation improvement program for the years of 2019 to 2024.
I move to adopt the 2019 to 2024 capital facilities plan and transportation improvement plan resolution.
Second. All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Get those. So it passes unanimously. So on to the next one, which is the comprehensive plan amendment. So.
Madam Mayor, council, I will take that item. This evening before you, you have a 2018 amendment to the comprehensive plan before you. This is an amendment that was reviewed in conjunction with the 2018 work plan that reviewed the document for improvements to accuracy, as well as fixing errors in the document, incorporating the vision of the American Institute of Architects, as well as measurable implementation objectives stemming from the strategic plan and the American Institute of Architects Sustainable Design Assessment Team document. Additionally, the document incorporates performance standards for each of the departments. That is a work in progress. That was an additional work plan item that we're trying to also get integrated into the comprehensive plan. So we do intend to have more details for you on that moving forward. This did go to the planning commission under public hearing. And we're extremely appreciative to the planning commission for their time in reviewing the document and providing some diligent comments on the document itself. This evening, our ideal is to have council discuss the document, talk about what they would like to see as far as improvements prior to the second reading of the document. It's also important to note that we did get some good input from Councilmember Sherman Warren, who was gracious enough to provide very specific comments on the document. We placed those on your dais so that they become a matter of the record on the comprehensive plan update. And for the most part, staff would recommend we go ahead and move forward with implementing each of those changes with a few minor exceptions. If you note that document on your dais, we do feel there is a benefit to keep the appendix of the document local. So that's something that we have flexibility to change at the local level. And that's something, so we would prefer to keep that appendix table of context in the appendix. However, that's not, that's not a must-have, but that's something that we would still recommend. And in addition to that, there are probably some items that may be up for some additional discussion relative to the airport mentioned under the bold items on the third page of those comments. And certainly from a vision, community vision perspective, the William Fairchild Airport was a very important part of that discussion. And I think there is still merit in all of the transportation items mentioned here by Mr. Sherman Warren. But also, it is notable that there is still a strong desire in the public to still see that airport have successful commercial air service. And it would be staff's belief that the predominant inhibiting factor right now is a nationwide pilot shortage that really would inhibit that. And so knowing or hoping that we overcome that in the future, we still think it's a valid and important part of our vision to, in the future, have commercial air service to Port Angeles. Additionally, I'd just like to speak to the American Institute of Architects Sustainable Design Assessment Process. We could write a book about the American Institute of Architects Sustainable Design Assessment Team process, how much implementation has taken place. And so I think it's just a question of where we want to draw the line with that input in the comprehensive plan. But I think that does bring to light one oversight and that that document was intended to be added as a reference document to the appendix as well. So that, those are the comments staff has, but we're really interested in further council discussion this evening to learn more about council thoughts on the document.
All right, I guess being a public hearing on this, let's open up the public hearing first and then we'll go into discussion. So anybody in the audience who would like to speak about the comprehensive plan amendments, please step up to the mic and state your name and address for the moment. And let us know your thoughts. Anybody interested at all? All right. Okay, I guess seeing no one, we, let's conduct the first round. Let's have, let's say, conduct the first reading. I'm trying to focus.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So what would I do with that? Okay, so it reads, "An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting amendments to the comprehensive plan." So, council, is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, this community desires commercial service at our Port Angeles Airport. It's been a topic of newspaper articles. It's been a topic of chamber business meetings. It's been a topic at all the civic clubs. I just want us to actually keep that vision and keep that focus because that is our desire. It may not be our reality today, but we're working on not being so isolated in the peninsula. And I think it's a viable vision. And I would like to keep that focus in there and not just lump it in with transportation.
Anybody else who'd like to speak?
And just to clarify, Councilmember Kida, I agree after discussing with Acting Manager West that it needs to stay in as a separate item. Although there's broader conversation regionally about whether other airports are major regional airports like potentially Everett. My concern is that, you know, if we're looking at commercial air service that's heavily subsidized and I've heard numbers like, it's gonna, people are willing to pay a hundred dollars per ticket, but to provide the services, a hundred and eighty dollars. And that's eighty dollars per person for somebody to fly to the Seattle area. I think we could do better cost benefit on other forms of public transportation, such as expanding the straight shot service to Bay Harbor Island. So that was my consideration that we write, but I'm happy scrapping that suggestion.
Thank you.
And I also appreciate Acting Manager West taking the time to meet today to go over those things and also for Planning Manager Reiki to help me involve in this. And I would like that as well. Thank you.
I was just going to quickly mention not a substantive issue, but I've, in reading and making a list of typos and whatnot, and I will just email those. So no one has to, so we, yeah, we don't have to go through them. I'll just email what I know.
So, council, when I went through this, I went through this quite in detail because it's, to me, the comprehensive plan is extremely important. And we've been going through this a couple of times. And I believe, I mean, I am very grateful to staff for all the work they've done because I think it's finally getting almost to a place that works. But the planning commission, if you read their comments, they desperately wanted more time. You know, and they talked about running out of time. They talked about not being able to do the job that they wanted on this comprehensive plan because they didn't have the time. So staff worked diligently to get this to the, to the planning commission. And it doesn't really give you that much time to do a thorough job of reviewing the comprehensive plan. And so what I would suggest, because I don't necessarily always want to do this year after year after year, ideally, we get a really good plan and then we don't have to do it for another eight years on long. So, but we haven't gotten to the point where we have a really good plan. And so because the planning commission had a couple of things that, you know, I felt like they were not clear, things like the truck label weren't clear. And they had, you know, there's, there's things that were potentials, but they didn't quite get to them. There's topics that had been discussed, but they weren't finished. So what I would like us to think about is sending this back to the planning commission and giving them the time to make this plan a really good plan for us. This way, they would have the option to make the changes that we all want. This way, we'll be able to make sure that some of the metrics that we've been talking about are done. The staff's done an amazing job of beginning those level of services from each department. It gives the staff a chance to finish those and get those properly and correctly. And also potentially review some of the other comprehensive plans out there. The MSRC website had one, and I got a chance to look at it last night, that it's from this little town. And our plan is full of, the city should do this and the city should do that. And all these shoulds are not, you know, we don't have to, but we should. You know, and it doesn't state things properly. I was impressed that this other plan had not a single, the city should. It stated the importance of different items. And so I think a change in language, like I said, our plan, we're slowly updating it, but I don't believe it's to the level that it's ready. It's not the way I would want it completed. So I guess I'm looking to you all to see if we can push it back, send it back to the planning commission. I know that it means that we don't meet the deadline. But that's, I think, a deadline that is set. But it's, because it's an update, there is no penalty for missing this deadline. And there is no, I think we all would benefit to having it done right than just to rush and get it done and pass it on. So those are my thoughts.
Mr. West, now would you, I'm not, I don't want the city to miss the deadline, can you? And we're at the point of conducting the first reading. So we, I'm ready to move forward. Mr. West, can you tell us what, what would be involved in missing the deadline? Because we have it before, and that's not the position I would want to put the city in. And to be perfectly honest, I appreciate the input. But, you know, we can fine tune it and fine tune it forever. I think at this point, we've done so much work, we need to move on and do our work. And it's, it's a living document and it's, and it's a process. But I, I don't, I just don't want to kill the, the process by just fine tuning it to the point where we're missing our deadlines. Can you explain about missing the deadline?
So there are some legislative deadlines in play that would suggest an amendment needs to be approved by June thirtieth of each year. And that, that was the reason you see the second reading scheduled and the second public hearing scheduled for June nineteenth. That said, this is an optional amendment, and I don't know that there would be a penalty to us. However, more than likely, we would want to at least bring forward a resolution that asserts that we're fully compliant to the Grand Amendment Act, which we believe we in fact are, and that we're taking this on as an optional approach. I think that we certainly could look at pushing that deadline and getting the amendment adopted after the deadline and see what happens. We haven't asked the question of Department of Commerce, and I think that's something that certainly we'd want to do following this, following this meeting to find out if that's an issue or not. I know that the planning commissioner who made the motion was very cognizant of the deadline simply because he has the exact same deadline relative to his work organization and their comprehensive plan. So I think that's perhaps where he was coming from with the feeling of the need to meet the deadline and to move things on the council. That said, there's a number of different ways that we could do this. And we could certainly postpone larger amendments for next year if that's something that council wants. And we could also push it back to the planning commission and follow through with the investment that we've already made so far this year by council, by planning commissioners and by staff, and, and see some follow through, recognizing that at the end of the day, we may not make that June thirtieth deadline. So I'd really love to hear more discussion by the council. And I'm happy to provide additional input as that discussion goes along. But I know that one thing that would be a priority for staff is whether we are looking to make additional changes next year or whether we are looking to push something back to the planning commission. We want a really clear council direction from at least four council members that say, here's exactly what we want to see changed. And here's what you want to, we want you to prioritize your time with, in any of those changes.
Councilmember Murray.
I just have a, just a question of clarification, please. Do you want to send the amendments back to the planning commission? Or do you want to send the entire comprehensive plan back for their further review and maybe additional amendment recommendations? Forgive me, I'm just not clear as to what, what you're suggesting.
Right. If you read the minutes from their, right. There's a, there's a sense there that they would have wished to have done more if they had had more time. And I'd like to, so that's sending the whole plan back for them to do what they believe needs to be done. The whole plan.
Okay. No, no value judgment, just a question.
Right. And it, and it would keep all of the work that's been done because there's a lot of work that's been done. And so it would allow them just to finish the job right.
I also have kind of a process question. So with what you were saying, we are not legally obligated to amend it this year?
That is correct.
So when is the deadline for us to be legally obligated to amend it? Is it next year, the year after, three years?
I'm going to defer to Acting Director Reiki on that, if she can provide the next update.
The last, the state, we updated our comprehensive plan per state mandate in 2016, so seven years from after 2016.
Okay, so, so really, we're under the gun, if we want to amend it, our amendment should be done by June thirtieth or by June thirtieth. But we're not under the gun, we stay to amend it at all?
Correct.
Until seven years from 2016, 2023?
With the understanding, that's correct. With the understanding that any amendment that the city considers, there has to be a notice to the state that we are undergoing this process. So they, they are required to know about any changes that we, the city, are considering to accomplish.
So does that mean they would already noticed that we're?
They were, correct.
And I think that that's one reason the resolution that says we are still compliant.
In compliance, right.
That's all that they would require that we be. Anybody else who would like to chime in on this?
I'd like to chime in. I really appreciate the amount of time that city staff and the planning commission have put into this. And I attended that last planning commission meeting because I threw the comprehensive plans in. I wanted to hear the discussion. And we have a lot of really talented members on the planning commission. And there was definitely a sense that I got that they can really have enough time to dig into it to the level that they would want. I feel in the same pressure. I mean, I triage the capital facilities plan. Sorry, trust, don't be bad. Because I know that we do the capital facilities plan every single year, and so I can revisit that next year. But I really like the idea and the suggestion that some people in the public have had that we don't revisit the comprehensive plan every year, that let's not be, have this be a regional cycle because of the amount of resources it takes as an organization. So I would appreciate how the process is open, taking the time to really dig into every chapter. I mean, I took several hours just to read chapter one on Monday. And at this point, we really need to have all of our substantive comments in by next Monday in order for there to be enough time for that to get edited. And the version that goes out the second hearing for the June eight, nineteenth meeting, actually. hearing for the June 19th meeting to actually have the final version in. So that's a really tight time pressure. Let's give ourselves some more breathing room if we can, so that we don't have to do this every year.
I'd certainly agree to let them have more time to review this.
We're looking for your comments, too. All right, counsel, so I need a motion.
I have one quick of a clarification question, because I do like the idea of taking the time to make the changes that we want to make once instead of revisiting, because it is so much staff time. So one question that I'm coming up with while I'm sitting here is, would it be creating a significant amount of additional staff time to do what we're suggesting, which is send it back to Planning Commission, pass a resolution saying that we're in compliance, and letting them deal with it? Some of those things are just things that have to happen regardless of the timeline. So do you perceive that there would be a significant increase in staff time if we did what we're potentially suggesting?
So I think it's important to know that whenever something goes back to the Planning Commission or comes to council for a third time, staff is always a part of that. So we're the ones actually making the changes to the document, or we're getting that direct input from the Planning Commission. So from a work plan perspective, it may inhibit our ability from moving on to some of those other projects that council wants. I think that's part of the pros and cons that council probably wants to weigh to see me. Do you want to spend those resources this year, or do you want to spend those resources in a future year, knowing that, we all know that council has many projects that you all would love to see completed, and we want to help you do that. But I think that as we continue to get the comprehensive plan update done, whether it's this year or next, it may delay the ability to move forward with some of those other projects.
I'd like to pipe in on that, because I understand that there might be a delay, but it also may guide us if this is done correctly. It may actually, in the long run, whether we update it this year or next year, we're still going to use the same amount of staff time. It just means that it's not right now, it would just happen next year, because it's not acceptable the way it is right now. And so, you know, I guess I personally would ask for another update, and then we're back into the same weeds. And then we're back into the same thing where the staff just gets it to the Planning Commission just in time for them to review with just a little bit of time. So this is what's happened year and year again. So I've been trying to push for a decent comprehensive update for the last four, five years, and it's always been a tiny little bit, we move the needle. And so this is our chance to just move the needle to the correct place. Let's just get it done. And then, yes, we may have a little bit delay on some of our other activities, but the truth is that if we get this right, it should guide a lot of our processes in a lot better way.
So I'm going to, if it's okay, just ramble for about 10 minutes. And by the time I get to the end, I'm going to. So, you know, I think one of the really important things that we have to talk about was line drawing, and that's something that I don't think city staff can do without our input, without our vision of what the plan should look like. And so I think that they're at a place of limbo. You know, in general, I look at the comprehensive plan that we have now, to me, it already seems like a hodgepodge of rewrites, a hodgepodge of editing. And it has a lot of the things that I see as my vision of the city in it. So in that instance, I don't see it as a bad plan, but I see it as somewhat of a flawed plan in that it has all these elements that I think, oh, this is where I want Portland to be going, but it's not clearly articulating that vision throughout. So to me, I don't think we need more editing. I don't think we need more picking apart one policy. To me, I think what we need is a fundamental rewrite. So looking at the, looking at how do we get there? I don't think that that's something that we're going to do today or next meeting. I don't even think that's something we're going to do by next year. I think that we have to push this process back further. I think that we should be talking about this when it comes time to budgeting. It's also possible for, to me, to look at this without the context of where our city staff is right now. We have, you know, if I was going to ask what's on the Planning Commission's workload coming up, there are some things that I'm really, really interested in seeing to move forward. And same with Allison's department, I mean, is the housing needs assessment. I know the Planning Commission, we've instructed Planning Commission to look into accessory dwelling units and temporary housing, you know, so there's a lot that's on their plate. I know that there's an open position in that department that hasn't been filled yet. I know that we have staff changes because of Janie Korn's retirement upcoming. So I think that we should be talking about during the budgeting cycle, do we need to add more positions to that department just for the sake of the comprehensive plan? And then we can talk about that process going through an actual two-year process that gives us a fundamental rewrite, where we get a good community vision, that's not just the city council's vision, but the community's vision about where is Portland going, what should this document look like, should, you know, what's the format that we like? You know, I have, one of the things that I feel like I haven't done my job is I haven't read other comprehensive plans. I haven't read a different city's comprehensive plan. I've read a little bit of Palm County's comprehensive plan, I've read the updates to Palm Transit's, you know, their proposed comprehensive plan, but I feel like I don't have the necessary expertise to say, this is what I want to see in a comprehensive plan. So I don't, you know, I don't think fine tuning is where we should be at. I think we should be talking about taking a step back and, you know, I do like the idea of doing it right, but I also don't like the idea of saying, okay, staff, next year is when we're going to do it right. I don't think that we're in a position to do that.
So, and I appreciate that input, and I'm wondering, I mean, I believe that this begins at the Planning Commission, because this is their, this is what their task force is to accomplish. So I'm wondering if we send it back to them and they have been laid out a plan on how to do this well.
I sat here thinking about this for quite a bit until Councilmember French just spoke, and I think that he's right on the money, that this has been cobbled together for a long time, and that the only way to truly fix it is to relay it back out. Does that mean that the city staff, we're not going to get this done issue. We'd like to get it done next year. And I want to thank staff for putting all of the comments in there. That was probably the best reading of the packet, which those folks had to say. And I, you know, we have changing issues in our community that need to be addressed. And in order to do that, we can't just cobble one more section of that plan. And I think that Councilmember French is right on there that, I'm not saying you throw it all away and start with planning, but start breaking it down. It seems like we forgot a comment here, we're going to do a name change there. That's just that much more cobbler for me. This just seems like nitpicky corrections of the plan when that time, in my opinion, would be better spent writing that plan so it fits the vision of the city as a whole.
All right, and I guess we should begin maybe with agreement as to, do we want a completely right, or do we, you know, how do we best move forward? Because like I said, I do believe that the Planning Commission is a place where the comprehensive plan gets its massive updates or first of all. So do we want to let them guide the process? Do we want to?
You know, one of the thoughts that I had that I originally wasn't sure if it was silly or not is to have a joint meeting with Planning Commission. Because one of the things that I, you know, reading through the packet, echoing some of the comments, I was extremely impressed by our Planning Commissioners. They know what they're talking about, more so than I do in some cases. They, you know, are, they are definitely, you know, some of them, we mentioned, they mentioned they didn't have enough time to read. I know in one case that was because he was a new member to Planning Commission, but they've all dug deep into these documents. And so that was one of the ideas that I had.
I'd like to see the Planning Commission decide or to give their opinion on what a rewrite would look like to them. Because do we need to rewrite every single section of this plan? No. No way. So what does that look like to them as far as rewrite?
Well, my concern is this whole thing getting bogged down in minutia. And no offense, I appreciate the council members' suggestions, they're all good, but my favorite council member's suggestion was the deputy mayor said she had a list of typos and she'll turn it in. I'm just reading things. Remove third paragraph passive voice, use land controls instead, use land or use planning instead of land controls. First paragraph has nice words, but really doesn't say much to me. I, I see this as someone who wants to be the author of the entire document and changing things. If we're all the author and change the words to suit ourselves, we'll get bogged down in minutia. So my concern is, is how many little tweaks do we all feel that we want to be the author of? And is that, is that really what we're doing here? So if we're going to send something to the Planning Commission, I think we have to be more accepting of the overall document, and not each one of us try to change specific sentences and paragraphs and become author to the point that we're making so many minor changes, our staff is just overwhelmed.
So I'd like to address that, because this plan does not need those tiny little changes, it needs major changes. It needs major changes to make sure that we have a vision, we are measuring the fact that we're actually going toward that vision, and then every year after year, we can see where we're going, and to see whether we're actually going to the mission or actually not going there. And that is the substantial changes that need to happen to this plan. There's a beginning, there's been a beginning to add some measures, but it's just, it's been a beginning. There's been a beginning to add the level of service, but that's, again, a beginning. So I would disagree that it's, that we all want to be authors about this, and I would disagree that it's just minor little changes. Yes, you know, whether we fix a comment here or not, it's not that important. But the Planning Commission has, like I said, when you read what they're saying, they wanted more time to make, to do the right thing for this plan. And so I think that we really need to send back to them and maybe, except ask them, what, how do they see the process maybe working, whether it's a year or two, but let's see if we can get it done right. How do we move forward?
Well, one specific question I have is, are there components, this is just from my own education, and I apologize for my asking sooner, but are there components of the comprehensive plan as a requirement of the GMA that aren't things that would be tied to metrics? But we're, so that's not what you're suggesting, you're suggesting where there are we tied to, just to clarify that.
So I'm going to have an unpopular opinion a little bit here. So I think that talking about levels of service in the comprehensive plan is a great idea. I think talking about the metrics in the comprehensive plan I'm uncomfortable with, because I think metrics is what our job is. Our job is to make sure that city staff has oversight from the citizens. I don't think we can write that into the comprehensive plan. I think that's our job. So, and I also think that, I mean, again, an unpopular opinion, I think there is a cost to putting those metrics in the comprehensive plan, and that costs the staff time. You know, I do think that, I want government to be accountable, but I also don't want to make government inefficient in order to get me every single statistic that I think I need to make sure it's accountable. I think that there's a cost. I think that, you know, I think that makes, I don't want to make government inefficient in the service of too much of a metric.
And to respond to that, I would agree that we have to be very careful about what metrics we ask for. So if we want to make sure we have affordable housing, we set the policy that we have 30% affordable housing, and then the metrics are, do we have 30%? And if we only have 10%, then we know where our trends are. So the metrics are there to see whether we're meeting the vision that we've sent. The level of service, again, could be, you know, whether it's to housing or whether it's to the planning specific, that how much housing and how much is it affordable? And so do we have enough affordable housing? And if our comprehensive plan looks to saying, yes, I think Portland, Angeles needs, like I said, I'm just pulling numbers out of my head, you know, 30% affordable housing, and we have 50% affordable housing, then we know our trend is going in the opposite direction. So that's why metrics are important.
I guess my vision of how that works is, we set levels of service, we provide guidance to a vision to say, okay, so we're going to, you know, if the city does a big project, we want to have sidewalks, we want to have, you know, these are the, this is the vision of how a city should look. And then as items come up on our agenda, we have to ask the skeptical questions and make sure that that vision is actually being followed through. I just don't know if, then, you know, and I also think there's a backfire effect that can happen, where if you tell staff, okay, we want you to provide these metrics, they'll, you know, not to malign any staff, but people can find ways to provide you the data without actually following the vision.
And you're absolutely right about that. But if you say, we believe that there should be sidewalks everywhere, and you find out 50% of cities don't have sidewalks, then you're not moving your vision. And that gives you a point of saying, okay, we need to provide more sidewalks. Is that?
I agree with Councilmember French. I think we can really get bogged down in metrics rather than the vision. I think we need to focus on the vision and.
And just to, like I say, I'm not saying we don't have metrics, I'm saying that the comprehensive plan is not the proper place for those metrics.
I agree. I agree with that. I don't want to fill out the comprehensive plan with metrics. I think we're, we're going to jam the engine out of this vehicle, and I don't want to do that.
This has been good. I also want to know, like, does this help staff? Does this discussion do anything?
Counsel is actually a great discussion. It's really informative to staff as far as the different opinions that we have on council, and I think it really is helpful ultimately. I think, again, what the key, though, is that four of you come together and say, this is, this is where we'd like to go, this is what we'd like to see from staff, or this is what we'd like to see from Planning Commission. I do think that if really we're looking at and council would like to see a scrapping of the comprehensive plan and a starting over of the comprehensive plan from the very beginning, I think staff ultimately has a very important first step role in that, and ultimately, it would be staff's role to really redesign that document and get it started and then present it to Planning Commission. If it's council's desire to have Planning Commission look at those perhaps chapters or sections that need to be rewritten, that might be something very appropriate for Planning Commission to look at and examine the document to say, well, this chapter is really weak, and we would suggest rewriting it anyways, how we would do it. I do think there, there is a distinct role between council and Planning Commission, and I think there's a value in keeping those roles separate so that the Planning Commission doesn't feel like they are to be influenced by council. I think that it's always valuable to avoid circumventing the Planning Commission's role by telling them, here's, here's what we want you to do. They have been appointed by all of you because they have independent minds, and they think very well relative to planning as a community. As you see in some of the minutes, we have some pretty exceptional Planning Commissioners right now, who really have a great thought process when it comes to the vision for this community.
And I think because of that, I think I would like to have, to hear from the Planning Commission, like I said, they've asked, they're really in their comment to ask for more time. So what would they see for process?
I liked, too, observing the last Planning Commission meeting, that a number of Commissioners mentioned afterward that that was the most substantive conversation they felt like they had a long time, and there was. And there was, I think, more interest for that kind of conversation. Also, just to note for everyone here that there is an opening on the planning commission and it hasn't been announced yet, but please consider applying. There's another consideration here too, which is this is an update process, not a rewrite of the comprehensive plan. We did that in 2016, I think that was the year. And that involves a lot of public input and a public process because ultimately it's not the councils, it's not city staff, it's not the planning commission. It's the publics. And that's part of the reason why, although I would have written that in the open section, I think it's appropriate to keep going with it. And that was there through the public process. So with that in mind, I think there's a major question is, if we're just doing an update and, you know, editing passive voice. Sorry, it's just my nature. If we're doing that, then we're within the update. But if we want to scrap it and rewrite it, then we're talking about not something we can do as a council, but something we have to do as a whole community. So with that in mind, I am interested in continuing to edit comments and that sort of thing. And would like to see us continue this process. And we can't do that in the next month. And I think the planning commission is pretty clear that they are ready to leave into more, but unfortunately ran out of time. So I'm in traffic motion and let's see if this works. I move to ask the planning commission to take up the comprehensive plan update again with sufficient time for substantive review and discussion to request a timeline for planning commission and council review that meets a June 2019 deadline. So I guess that's a request to city staff to come up with a timeline for planning commission and council review. And then to resolve to notify state agencies, luckily with current updated needs, growth management act requirements, and our intent to finalize the comprehensive plan with sufficient time to incorporate all committee and council comments.
That's an awfully long motion. Did you get... No, okay. That's really a long motion to make. Is there any way you could...
Look, it's just a, it seems like two motions. One motion is to extend the deadline to next year, and then the second would be to tell the state that we're gonna come up with.
Let's limit it to... So I'll wipe that motion out and say, I move to ask the planning commission to take up the comprehensive plan update with sufficient time for substantive review and discussion and a timeline from city staff for planning commission and council review. That allows us both to have time to review the comprehensive plan.
If staff may make a quick point, just the term update is utilized for the seven-year update. The term amendment is utilized for the annual amendment. And I think what we're talking about here is an annual amendment.
Thank you. I use those completely correctly.
All right, I'll second that. And a second on the floor. Any discussion?
I would just like to have input from Mr. West, guys, too. You know, the staff doesn't have a lot of...
He's right.
The staff doesn't have an unlimited capacity to keep piling on new projects and work without something else to do. So I would just like to ask Mr. West, if this is doable with a doable workload, considering everything else we've asked staff to do. I don't know if that's a reasonable question, but it seems like we have to, we keep throwing things back to staff. And I just need to know, is this, are we piling on? How much are we piling on if there's so much work that will just create?
Well, again, I do think, you know, there is certainly a workload with it. But I think what I heard in the motion is a desire for planning commission to take the time to really look at the document and determine what needs to be amended within the document. That will still take some staff time. And I think that we need to recognize that it will continue to be a work plan item, it sounds like through June of 2019. But we will specifically be asking the planning commission to play a role there. I do think that planning commission will be greatly benefited just if there's issues or areas that you really want them to look at specifically beyond just reviewing the whole document. Because we know that their time is valuable too. And we want to make sure that they can really be focused on what council will like them to focus on.
Would it be helpful if a couple of us planned to come and make a presentation to the planning commission? Or would it, just a memo be? If we can't, is there a way for us to communicate that? Or would we communicate that through you?
I think that ideally that gets communicated on the record this evening.
So I will not be supporting this motion. And I think that the cost of an amendment process, what I'm worried about is that a year from now, we're gonna be in the same position, where we're gonna see a plan that's amended and we'll still have issues with it. We'll still say, oh, this isn't exactly what we want. This isn't the vision that we want to see, doesn't have... So I worry about the staff load, the... Sorry, I'm gonna take a second here. What I would like to see is the fundamental rewrite. I think that is a two or three-year process. I think that we should address that when we talk about budgets. We should address that when we talk about... And I also think that that would give us a document and a process that we would all be satisfied with. And to me, I want to see the planning commission and staff be working on things that are crucial right now, that I see as really, really important to you right now. And I don't want us to just sit here with amendment after amendment until the... I don't think we can do that to get to a comprehensive plan that we view as the document that sets the city up for that long-term vision success.
That's fine. I'm gonna also agree with the councilman French. I won't be supporting this either. Although I am a great, great fan of sending things to the planning commission and I think their amendment process was very thoughtful. I got a chance to read this. And, but just, you know, all they came up with was four amendments in a brief period of time. And we can send it back to them and they can come up with four more and four more and four more. And so if we're gonna really, really scrutinize and scrub this document, and I scrubbing, I mean in the sense of cleaning things up that we want to. And it does, since you have a lot of shoulds and this and that. That language in this document drives me insane. It really does. And so we have until 2023 to really rewrite this thing, not amend it, rewrite it. And I would like to see us really begin the process of rewriting this document, start getting the input that we need and the clear vision from the citizens of Fort Angeles, where they want their city to be in 10, 15, 20 years. And not should, could, or would, but this is what we really want to see. And so, you know, to me, this seems like being bitten to death by ducks. And so... So, anyway, again, I agree with the councilman French. Councilman French, you know, I'm sorry, but I wouldn't support this.
I'm having trouble maintaining my thoughts because I'm thinking ahead as people are talking. I have, I hear what has been said about the idea of redoing. And we may be in a position of needing to do that again in 2023, but a little bit of staff time to get us pretty close feels like a much better... I just worry about our budget capacity for a whole redo even in four years. And I don't think it necessarily means that we need to not make a reasonable amendment within the next year pending that process. I don't know that I think it needs to be neither. Or because my concern is we get to a time when that would be a possibility and there just won't be a way to do it. And then we will have been waiting. And I guess I don't think sending it back to the planning commission for a little bit of, giving them a little bit more time doesn't even, if we're saying, which the motion that we're considering does, that we're pushing it out one year, it doesn't have to be something they deal with in July. There, we could maintain some other priorities in that timeframe. So I kind of like the idea of sending it back and giving them the time that they did say they would like more time. And they can decide when they address that. It doesn't have to be in the next, within the next meeting, for example. If that's my thought.
Any comments like to make, please?
I just worried that we'll be in the same position next year. I would really like to take this over long-term and really work on it. And we're getting bogged down in the amendments. I just think we need to spend more time in the next time it's time for an update and amendment. Let's do it right.
So, Mr. West, can you give us how much it cost in 2016 to do a full update amendment?
I believe in 2016, we spent approximately $64,000 on the update. However, important to know that in 2015, we requested a two-year budget allocation for it and weren't successful with that. I think we all know we were in difficult budget times at that time. And we weren't successful. So when we got it, we had about six months left. So we knew it needed to be an expedited process. And for that reason, it was very cost efficient and about $64,000 is my recollection.
And as I recall, so this was, you know, due to the expedited time, what we got, if you looked at the previous comprehensive plan, there was, the language was almost the same except for, you know, updated pictures, updated, you know, statistics on the city. So I don't have, I guess from experience, I don't have the trust that a huge update is gonna get us something better necessarily. And this is the reason why I think that we are working little by little and it's getting better. And we're seeing the changes that I think, sending it back to the planning commission, allowing them to do some of the substantial changes. Because there's a difference between the context, you know, as to what the community may want and when we go out there and asking them versus the format. And the format would take into the, you know, how we handle services, how we do the measures, the format of the document itself. And so right now, the format is what's getting fixed properly. The context can come at the next big update and then we have the more of the wishes and wants of the city. So that is the reason why I think it's really important that it goes back to the planning commission so that they can take a look at it and fix some of the format issues that are important. Like I said, getting some of those measures, you know, are we gonna measure a policy? No, we're not gonna measure the policy. So what are the important goals that we're gonna necessarily measure? And then that allows for the next update to be simplified. And so I think, truthfully, as we go, we keep taking things out of this plan because it's too complicated. And I'm hoping that it continues to get simplified and simple so that it makes sense. A nice, simple, elegant plan would be so much easier for us to use. So I will be supporting the motion. All right, there's any more discussion?
I definitely... This is great. This is a really good discussion. So just if I was gonna rank my preferences, number one would be a fundamental rewrite. Number two would be to not amend it. And number three would be to amend it either this year or next year. So that's kind of where I'm at. Like, the amendment process has costs. We've already paid some of them. But, you know, if our goal is to have this, you know, when we talked about the context of the previous, I'm gonna get the words wrong, but the 2016 update. You know, going through a budget crisis at the same time trying to rewrite the comprehensive plan is difficult. In my mind, I feel like we can plan better next time and budget better next time. And that's why I... So if our goal is to rewrite it again, then I feel like the worst option is to say, let's extend it another year. Let's add staff time, planning commission time, and then rewrite it again six years from now or whatever the date is. If our goal is to have that rewrite happen again, then we should be continuing the public hearing until the June 19 meeting and then taking this amendment and passing it. So, you know, to me, the worst outcome is to do it twice and pay for it twice and extend it another year and then rewrite it again later.
What says that we have to rewrite in 2023?
If we want to.
No, of course there's... So I misspoke earlier. It's eight years, sorry. So 2024. It's very important to note that a city can choose to do a comprehensive update earlier than that.
We have to re-extend our eight years.
Recognizing that when the city chooses to do a comprehensive update, the public involvement and the notification requirements change from just an annual amendment. That's just important to note for timing wise. The city could choose to do an earlier comprehensive update if they chose to do so.
So then to re-rank my options. My preference is to do an update in three, two to four years from now. Second best would be just to amend it, you know, this way right now and then do an updating again later and then... But, you know, I think that that, to me, makes the option of let's just, you know, instead of even the rewrite, I'll use the word update. Let's just update it. Let's just either not amend it now or take this instead of pushing it off a year, let's just update it when we want to update it and do that process correctly.
Ma'am, Brooke, can we pause for just a moment? Staff is still not completely clear on what the motion on the table is. So can we circle back to that?
Yes, please.
Do you want me to re-read the motion?
Yes, please. And this is, we had a long emotion again, and now we're moving to the shortened version.
Yes, the motion on the table is to move to ask the planning commission to take up the comprehensive plan amendment again with sufficient time for substantive review and discussion and to request a timeline from city staff for the planning commission and council review that meets a June 2019 deadline. And if that specific deadline is the issue provoked, we can change that. We can just push it out a few months instead. But, I mean, right now, the timeline didn't work for the planning commission and it fell across. That is the motion.
All right. Did you read the comment?
Just gonna say quickly, the amendments that were suggested, we didn't waste staff time or anything on them. They're just, they're not going away. It's gonna be added into that.
Absolutely. I guess my feeling is there's this balance between taking, we can articulate that we're taking planning commission time to do this. But the other way to look at it is if they're asking for more time, then we're respecting their role. Allison, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think it's important to clarify that point. So we had one planning commissioner of the seven, of six that were present bring up the timing issue. Just one. And so you'll note their recommendation was a recommendation that city council approved. So I don't, I wouldn't want anyone misunderstanding the planning commission recommendation. It was to approve the document, approve the amendments that were presented.
And I would agree. But actually, there was, as I am looking at this, and there was a sense, when I read this whole thing, that there was things that they wanted to do that they didn't get a chance to do because of the time limit. So that is the reason why I feel like they wanted more time. And so I'm just trying to think, you know, like they wanted to get into the neighborhood and look for the future. They wanted to talk about the crosstown route. They wanted to, they felt things were not clear. They wanted to do... They wanted to do, you know, how to deal with some of the homeless issues, you know, for the provision of that. So, you know, this was there. So, they needed, because here's, she felt that there needs to be clarification on the transportation routes and the crosstown route portion. So some of these things, as we read the comments in the minutes from the Planning Commission, there's a sense that they wanted to do more, and we just did not have time to do that. So that's why I'd like to just have them have time. You know, we don't need to rush this. Anyway, so we have a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? No. Okay, so it passes four to three. All right, so this is going to go back to the Planning Commission.
And I think I'm going to make a better motion to resolve to notify state agencies of our belief that the current updates meet Growth Management Act requirements and our intent to finalize the comprehensive plan with sufficient time to incorporate all committee and council comments. Second.
I would like to have the clerk read the motion. It wasn't clear, it couldn't be heard properly.
You might have to read it again, and slowly.
The clerk did not get all of it.
Sorry. I move to resolve to notify state agencies of our belief that the current updates meet Growth Management Act requirements and our intent to finalize the comprehensive plan with sufficient time to incorporate all committee and council comments.
Actually, and that might need to be reworded, right?
Mr. West, how would it be more succinctly worded appropriately? Did you know?
Left, Mr. Will.
Oh, Mr. Clark.
I would suggest that we say that the Council resolved to declare that our current comprehensive plan satisfies state GMA requirements. And you would that.
All right. So we have a new motion on the floor, and we have a second. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, guys. So, do we need a, do we need a break? Five-minute break? Okay, guys, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll get back.
Do you want? I'm happy to go.
So, other considerations, PennCom or regionalization update.
Thank you for waiting so long, guys. And gals?
Yes.
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. We are very excited to, to give you a quick update on our joint regionalization efforts that we've been working on for a number of years. On my left, you're going to hear from him in a second, Regional 911 Director Carl Hatten. I want to introduce some special guests as well. Under Sheriff Ron Cameron, Swin Police Chief Jerry Crane, Assistant Chief Dan Ork from Column Fire District Three, Assistant Chief Tony Hudson from Column Fire District Three, and Chief Sam Phillips from Column Two Fire Rescue. And so, my point is that besides myself and Chief Ken Buke and Carl, this is a joint effort. And we are really happy to talk to you about this. Thanks for not wanting to back up, because we have a new council and give you some old information. Just to tell you what PennCom is. PennCom, Peninsula Communications, Division of the Police Department. It's been in its present form for about 28 years. It was created from a local agreement amongst fire and law agencies in 1990. Its budget, right now, is 2.8 million. We have 23 employees, including Director Carl Hatten on contract. In 2017, PennCom handled 37,500 911 calls, another 125,400 emergency calls. Revenue sources from, for PennCom, it's in your budget book, it's a special revenue fund. So the money for PennCom comes from sales tax, predominantly 911 phone tax, user fees, state grant money, and Fire Department, the Police Department as users, we contribute about 448,000 of that, of that budget. Since 2006, we contract with Jeffcom 911 for director and for other management services. And we have 17 agencies that are part of PennCom, and they're part of an advisory board. We like to think that we, we treat our, our partner agencies like, like a small government board that is an advisory board. And there's some history and some updates that I want Carl to talk to you about, and that we're, all of us are available for questions. And what we're asking Council tonight is to give us permission to proceed forward with direct negotiations with Jeffcom. I'll see if I can figure out how to work this. Go forward. Excellent. So I would also like to extend my gratitude, thanks for having me come out after what's already a long meeting. I'll try to keep it relatively short. Regionalization has been, as this says, been part of the political landscape and ongoing discussion for the last 20 years or more. I started dispatching in 1986, a couple days ago, back with Swin Police Department. And during that time, that was consolidation effort, which took Swin Police Department and Fire District Three Dispatch and Chief Hudson Dispatch, who were with me back in those days. And we took that and we consolidated that, and that's what became PennCom. We took, the city of Swin had a dispatch center, city of Port Angeles had a dispatch center, the county had a dispatch center, Forks, et cetera. So consolidation made sense at that time. We brought those agencies together under one roof and we performed that. We've done a number of studies, the latest, two studies, one was in 2000, one was in 2015. The state paid for those studies to look at a regionalization model, does it make sense? Is that something that we should fork with or not, or should we at least explore that? This body, back in 2015, did a council resolution authorizing the Chief of Police to start working on, with Jefferson County, on conversation, especially on moving that project forward. Since then, in 2016, the Council authorized the signing of PennCom and Jeffcom 911 Interlocal Agreement that allowed me to run two 911 centers as part of the effort to move this forward. So I've had a rather full plate for the last couple of years, trying to run two 911 centers and to keep this moving. In the last 18 months or so, we have worked with the stakeholders with these agencies that sit in front of you, in beginning negotiations with them. And so what we thought in our trajectory that I was looking at is, we separate PennCom from the city of Port Angeles, so it's independent, kind of mirroring what Jeffcom is, who still afforded your information. Jeffcom is an independent governmental entity that's built on an interlocal agreement from the seven agencies that were governed, that are part of Jefferson County. And so they've given the authority, responsibility to use a 911 dispatch to that organization. And that's the organization that I run. We looked at this as a trajectory, saying if we separate PennCom and make it so that they're like, then we can start having conversations between the two like entities on the regionalization effort. That seemed to make sense. So that's what we started with. So for the last 18 months or so, we'll come back to that. For the last 18 months or so, we've been working with the legislative bodies of all of the agencies that are participating, the five primary agencies that are represented here, with their chiefs, with their legal representatives, and negotiating heavily, and having some pretty significant discussion. And we'll touch on some of those as far as governance and funding, and how those things are going to work if we were to separate. We'd like to take that work and translate that into a little bit different movement. So, part of why we're doing this is that, on the state level, at the legislative level of the state, they're taking an interest in 911 funding and efforts within the 911 community to do several things. One is regionalization. We're looking at how do we centralize, what we can't regionalize, and how do we consolidate function. So we're looking at certain things. We enjoy, in our state, every single county is a separate entity, and they have the right to pretty much do whatever they want within legal constraints. When you work on a 911 system, then every single 911 center across the state has a different CAD system, computer dispatch system, has a different 911 back home structure, different IT, different technologies. We're having a hard time justifying spending so much money on so many disparate systems when it would really make sense to start bringing those together and forming some actual plans. The legislature, we've approached the legislature over the last several bienniums, because they've taken 911 funds that we set aside with intent, knowing that next generation 911 is going to cost a lot of money. And they've been taking that money, seeing that we have a balance in our budget, and taking that money and moving it into other places that the general fund needs. And so we've been having that struggle. We have a couple of counties that have been looking at potentially asking the legislature to lift a 1/10th or 1% sales and use tax, so we could ask for individual counties a 2/10th or 1%. Every time we approach the legislature with these types of things, they start asking more and more pointed questions. And a lot of those questions really resolve, does the 911 community have a long-term plan? Are you thinking ahead? How are you spending your money? Why are you asking for more tax money? How is it really being spent? And part of that, in my mind, in working toward these 911 centers for the past several years, is part of my responsibility is to kind of address that and look at those long-term considerations. And, and we have a lot of counties in our state that are doing similar projects. So in Washington State, there are regionalized centers, Franklin Benton, Assot and Whitman, and in Assot and Whitman, they actually dispatch for Park Idaho as well, and then Shalana Douglas. Those are the predominant regionalized. And the definition for regionalized is more than one county. So we're a consolidated center, so we dispatch for multiple agencies within one county, but these are true regionalized centers. And we're currently, I am currently sit on the Policy Subcommittee of the 911 Department. We're the body that are part of an advisory committee that advises the SECA, the State Emergency Communications Office, on policy, how to spend tax money, what the priority should be. I sit on the Policy Subcommittee as a representative of Western rural counties, there's several of us. And I'm also working on the subset committee that is working on regionalization policy. So I have vested interest in trying to get that written in a way that supports small towns like ours, small communities, and doing the regionalized plan. So a brief history of our current work, again, we spent the last 18 months to two years with the five primary interested parties. We've, we've opened this up to all of our agencies, and really five parties that have the biggest stake in PennCom, both financially and for levels of service. They're the ones that stood forward, and said, we are actually really interested in one part of this negotiation process and worked through this. So again, we work with the attorneys from these charter agencies in drafting that isolated separate PennCom from the city. Work with the legislative bodies, attorneys, the CEOs of each agency, and we have a consensus on a governance model, a financing model, and a model of how a separate PennCom would work. The proposal we're looking at, originally, my thought was, as I said before, separate PennCom and then start negotiating. Some of the concerns are, once the city lets go of this particular asset or department, however you want to view that, you lose certain abilities to control things like the budget, how much it's going to cost you, some of those types of things. Maybe even levels of service, you lose ultimate control. So currently, there's an advisory board that we go to and say, we are looking to do these things. The advisory board says yes or no, but ultimately, it's the city's decision. And so some of the red assistance from the city is, we separate without a further plan of regionalization, because that's the actual goal, that that might not be the smartest plan. So what else can we do? So this is what we're looking at, taking the 18 months or two years or so of effort that we put into negotiating what we can agree on a platform, and then taking that as a platform for negotiations, and we're negotiating directly with Jefferson County, both the folks at PennCom, my board, and elected officials in Jefferson County, to start looking at what is actually going to work for us. That's the way we're going to do it, how we approach this. We've agreed upon the governance of how we would like to see a separated PennCom as part of negotiations. Our governance, currently, the model we're looking at, is someone from the legislative body of each of the five agencies would serve on administrative board. They would ultimately make all the budget decisions, just like an executive board would do. One of the side effects of this is it highlighted the practice, the county has been taking somewhere in the neighborhood of about a 5% indirect charge on the tax revenue that comes into PennCom. So that's the 1/10th, 1% sales and use tax, the 911 tax, and then some grant money that the state gives us. During this negotiation process, we came to a number of either 2% or no more than 2%. So if that were to happen by itself, which we are looking at by itself, will save PennCom about $135,000 a year that's potential revenue that does a number of things, it reduces user fees, potentially for the city and all our agencies, it improves our staffing levels, which is what we're really looking for, and that's a whole separate discussion, but it gives us some breathing space. And so this negotiation process highlighted that that was a problem, and has brought that forward. We actually have that occurring, you know, with the next, we're having discussions with the county again about that, it's a separate issue, so it's not just attached to this lift. Well, questions always come to budget impact. Right now, there's a lot of unanswered, so there's really no budget impact to the ask. The ask is for us to negotiate. And so the, the, there is some cost in our legal department, my time, which is contribution, so we can get that anyway, and our chief's time, and our agency's time to support that effort. As far as actual budget change, structure, how we dispatch, what that costs us, there's no change until we actually come to a place where we make the decision to potentially regionalize, building a center, those types of things that this conversation should bring us towards. Currently, PennCom remits about $84,000 back to the general fund in indirect costs, so that's the, for City Council, for the City Manager's Office, HR, all those kinds of things. We suspect that some of those may be from a need because we'll still potentially use those. Some of those, the new entity would like to take up and keep it themselves. PennCom operates predominantly outside the city's general fund because it's our special revenue fund. The total impact to the city budget, besides the $84,000 that we contribute, is the $448,000 that we charge to the city of Port Angeles Police and Fire Services for our dispatch fees. We charge fees across the board, all of our user agencies, but that's the city's contribution. We know that 2019 budget process is really already started, starts as soon as the budget's signed, frankly. And we're going to, our intent is to act as though regardless of what happens, 2019 is going to happen just like it is today, and we're going to budget for it just like there's no change. And that's our intent to go forward through the budget season. Briefly, some overarching fire in doing this, the science of legislative, look at us, our state 911 office, saying, regionalization, consolidation, centralization, those are things that we really need to think about as a community. There's a feeling that someday legislature might not say, we have to do it. They'll just say, we have these funds that could be available to you that aren't anymore unless you do it. And that's, that's more of what I see, because we are allowed to run our own 911 centers per county how we want to, and the state can decide how we want to fund them. A regionalized center for us, combining Jefferson County and Cloud County, we're a, a independent region, really, from the rest of the state, kind of being up in the far north west, separated from the rest of the other world, from a couple of bridges and highways. It makes sense for us to do it from that perspective. It offers some less redundancy in overhead management, and also just in staff function. Gives us more depth in the organization, the ability to fill shifts, potentially without overtime. One of the issues we're facing is, we're going to be losing five employees this year, retirements, and for military, other reasons. Trying to fill those positions is really challenging in this economy, trying to find qualified applicants. Jeffcom's facing a similar dilemma. We've been down five people for months and months, we're just now starting to be able to fill those positions. A regionalized center has more capacity to handle those type of short calls in the police. It allows for less complexity and dysfunction. Currently, your dispatcher is on the phone, answering the 911, getting CPR instructions on the phone, and potentially also answering the office rooms on the priority traffic stop, all at the same time. And that happens day in, day out, 24/7, that type of operation happens. This would allow us to specialize a little bit more and reduce some of that complexity. So again, dedicated call takers versus regular dispatchers and call takers combined, future, we may be able to house some separation there. Centralized technology and databases, we're, we've already been working on that, as part of my, this couple of years, member presentation at Council a couple of years ago, was, we've been working on those things all along. How do we combine our databases, mapping, and those types of pieces to fit this vision, but also separately, if it doesn't happen, there's still a benefit to both of the communities. Better use of limited resources, we have access to revenue from two counties, grant money, user fees, and a single facility potentially is one of the outcomes. Replacing aging infrastructure for both agencies. PennCom is in a home that's too small for it, has been for some time, we manage. Jeffcom is in a home that's entirely too small for it, we barely manage. Does it make sense to build two 911 centers, or does it make sense to build one 911 center that's regionalized? Those are some of the questions that we're, that we're putting out there. By vacating the property for the city of Port Angeles, that now is opportunity for the city to reclaim some of that space, whether it's the city of Port Angeles Police Department or other agencies that space becomes available. We're hoping that this will facilitate the building of a new center, if it's purpose-built, this has room to grow. It aligns with legislative intent that I talked about earlier. It aligns with current efforts to house, potentially house a new ELC with a 911 center, which Jefferson County ELC sits right next to the 911 center, there's great benefits to having. to having that partnership. When we think about that, that opens up opportunities for funding, for grants, for pop sharing, and making a reasonable build for us. Provides interoperability solutions that are definitely attractive in the grant process. Anytime you mention the magic words interoperability, the ability to communicate better with each other, grant money starts to become available, because that's the big push, especially the cascading rising, all the other things that we've been seeing over the last couple of years. And what we are requesting is, what I would like to see, what we would like to see, is putting together a coalition of our five entities with the city of Port Angeles leading that, and to begin direct negotiations with Jefferson County. Using the current ILA that we've spent so much time working on as the core basis of what we're starting with on the negotiations and then going from there. And then, of course, we would report back to city council with whatever influence you would like. Ninety days would be helpful in this instance, because my board at Jefferson County, so speaking as the executive director of Jefferson County, my board was just made aware of this change in direction. This isn't quite the direction that I expected. And so at the end of this month, we were going to have a full day retreat to talk about what our platform looks like, what the asks are from Jefferson County, how do we match what's currently in the ILA, so that we could actually have substantive conversations, if that's the direction the city council takes us. And that is, I'll have to answer questions if you have.
Thank you for that presentation.
Well.
Any questions?
I have sort of just an odd specific question. So the county certainly serves West End, and I'm just wondering what, whether there's any potentially negative impact to the West End to not being a part of this six-agent portion. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm getting a no.
Well, I would suggest a couple of things, is that, one, we have the sheriff's department who represents the entire county.
Right.
So that's part of it. We have the same issue with Jefferson County, so we own, Jefferson County takes up a whole lot of West End that there's really not a lot of population base for, but there's definitely service issues out there. And our sheriff speaks to the West End as well, there's no fire agency out there in Jefferson County, so that's a little bit of a challenge. But if that answers that question, it's partially, it'll be a more good.
Sure.
Yeah. It wasn't, and it wasn't an issue of like, well, I think we should go back. It was just a clarification.
Sure.
So this has been under discussion for quite some time. Having been in the PennCon facilities several times, I realize how cramped it is for space. Where would a new facility be?
Well, that is a fantastic question, and the answer is we have no idea. So there are, there are some moving parts that are occurring. So in my vision of a trajectory of how we would do this, separate a PennCon, now we'll start negotiating. Once that's been resolved, we start looking for a home. That's changed a bit. There is work with the current sheriff on potentially doing some sort of work on the west side of the city that would incorporate near the airport an ELC with a combined dispatch center. I like that, that's a great idea. Jefferson County would like to be in a position where they would have at least some options that would be looked at, and I think that's really important to get buy-in from our elected officials in the community. That needs to be really transparent, in my opinion, and needs to, the players need to have a voice, no matter how big or small they are, they need to at least have a voice at the table to discuss that. So that is one of the looks is at the, either at, not at the airport at this time, but near the airport. There's several locations that we've looked at, there's potential here, potential there, and really it'll come down to economics. Where's it the easiest and best to build? What kind of infrastructure is being offered there? What does a long-term lease look like there? And, you know, how centrally located is it for two counties, there's lots of questions. And a lot of, and I firmly believe that a lot of the political discourse is going to come down to where is it going to physically be located?
So our 911 is increasing, the calls are increasing. Are they increasing at the same rate in Jefferson County?
I would suggest that our population growth in Jefferson County, and I might not be 100% accurate, because I'm not as statist, statistician, I can't say the word, but I would suggest that Jefferson County growth is a little slower than Clough County, and I think our overall statistical growth in calls per service, we do about a third of the call volume that PennCon does in 911s and law and fire, much less. And I don't think the growth there is quite as, as fast as it is here, but it is growing.
I would like to share with the council that last year, two years ago, when I was in our sister city, Mutsu, northern Japan, I toured their PennCon facility. They have a new facility and it's gone regional, and they were so excited to show it off and the big screens and how it works, and it was much more efficient on a regional basis. So it's like everyone's thinking regional now, no takeout.
And I think there's definitely a, there becomes a size that doesn't work anymore, but I think the smaller and medium-sized communities coming together, and I think that we're in a pretty sweet spot for that financially and for how paid a facility needs to be, and how much area you're trying to take care of. I think that makes sense. You look at King County, they have 13 911 centers in King County, but that population base requires that really. Maybe it doesn't require 13, but it certainly requires more than one or two. So that's what we're looking at in the regionalization. And there are other counties across the state that are looking at similar projects, or at least some sort of consolidation of equipment, or working out contracts where, like for instance, the 911 phone system that PennCon currently has could run half the state. The 911 system that JeffCom owns could run half the state. And there are dozens of those across the state, it makes no sense. But working out, a lot of the costs associated with that are connected things, the connectivity fees, what our highest fees charge, those are where it starts to not make a lot of economic sense. But there's a lot of those pieces that we're working on in the regionalization effort to help bring some of those costs down.
I'd like to hear from our police chiefs of benefits and our under sheriff of benefits in the regional point if we may.
So, Council, I'll just add to what Director Hatton said, you know, in terms of our call volume, a 911 center, call volume is a very similar story than you heard from Chief Debut in terms of the volume of work. We produce a high level of service. We take business calls from all of our agencies, and if you've ever been in a place where you on Saturday try to reach a local police department, and you can't, or a fire department, or people after hours, we provide that service in PennCon, but we do it at somewhat of a cost to our staff in terms of a non-sustainable workload and call volume, you know, coming into the center. One of the reasons why we originally were exploring the regionalization concept would be to produce redundancies, be able to overlap consoles between the two counties, and be able to provide more specialized service, like fire consoles for the, for the fire and emergency calls, but also be able to cover more ground with maybe a few less people, like, like the former chief used to say, reduce the pace of our growth, because we're going to have to add to our, our capacity, our, and our growth in police calls, fire, and 911 is very similar. And I think, I think answered your question, but under sheriff, I think that's why all the departments here, so anybody who wants to ask questions. So there is a lot I can't add to the Carl Center, he said it a lot better than I did. You know, the one thing that we want to be careful of, we want to work forward and make sure that whatever regionalization model we decide on is going to be a benefit, particularly those that we represent here in Port Angeles, of course, in Clough County, that's what the sheriff's role is, is to take a look at that, because it's not that, you know, there's any negativity about regionalization, of course, redundant cities and things that that take place in the management. We need to save money in every step that we can take, and I think that's what we're aiming for. And so we're seeing what we can develop as we pursue this process.
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion to authorize the chief of police to negotiate directly with the JeffCom 911 and report back to our city council within 90 days?
Second. We got a motion from the table and a second. Is there more discussion? No more questions?
Based on the few presentations I've seen about earthquake and tsunami, the idea of locating the airport seems like a great idea, especially co-locating with the emergency operations center. I haven't seen presentations on Jefferson County's response and where their critical locating areas are going to be, or whether they're staging from that sort of thing. So I'm curious how that would work with their plans or what they're going to be doing with Jefferson County.
All right, and that is definitely part of the discussion, part of why we're, we're spending this month doing some data collection for the Jefferson County entities, we're going to be sitting down with the county treasurer's office and finance, trying to come up with some of those things. My tasking to them is look at, Clough County is moving forward with a plan that will likely move forward regardless of regionalization, if it happens the way it looks like it could happen, that will build a new facility so on the western side of Port Angeles closer to the airport, for all valid reasons, they all make sense. Jefferson County is looking at that, saying they're looking at their community, do we have something similar? Do we have something that meets our needs? One of the regionalization models is to, is to have two facilities, but run them, run them full-on administration, all employees are part of it. There are benefits to that, but you don't see the same pop savings for facility that you would as a single facility, but that's certainly on the table as part of the discussion. And it may come to the point where each community feels so strong that they need that capacity in their community, that they're not really willing to build a standalone, single 911 center. My personal opinion is that if that's the direction we're going, is that we see the most benefit from that.
Another question. Are you imagining the PennCon or the entity that is PennCon, JeffCom combined, having its own human resource, finance, legal departments as well, or would it still rely on the state?
So that's a great question, but that would actually depend on who we come back with, and ultimately, you all. I mean, we're, our, our shared vision that we put together with our partner agencies right now hasn't formed up, and I've got some, after two years of learning, I've got some strong opinions, and Carl knows about certain things, like human resources. I really think that needs to be part of a city or a county, and there's ways to do that. I mean, there's, there's things that we've learned, but what we would bring back would be a proposal that would be recommendations along those lines, finance, human resources, legal, things like that, that would be, you know, to sort of bring out the pros and cons of what, like the under sheriff said, about doing this. There's not really one way to do it, there's probably several ways to do it. And, you know, council has the option of telling us we're not, we're not ready for this as well. I think you've done a lot of great work on this so far, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Firstly, I think I'd like to definitely understand those pros and cons well, you know, when you guys do your reports and the different options, because like you said, there's probably not one specific way of tying all this together, and so when you do come back and, you know, before we do this, to kind of just really lay it out, pros, cons, whatever dollar benefits potentially, and where the dollar, you know, the detriment's from that. And, yeah, when you see, you know, 20 years down the road, it's, yeah.
We're planning for the future.
Any other comments? All right, Council, we got a motion on the table and a second, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll see you guys in 90 days.
Thank you all for coming to pick me up.
We are on to the contracts, oh no, other considerations, the article. Okay, so the article came out in the Seattle Global, and it reads, the title of the article is, "A Family Faces Racism at a Memorial." Hey, this is America. And it was posted on May 31st, 2018 by James Pond. This is a picture of him and his family, and then they, this is, so, I'll read it, because it is a short article. "The stream beam retrieved from the site of the World Trade Center in New York sits at a centerpiece in the majestic park that overlooks the Strait of Guadalajara, originally known as Francis Street Park. It was renowned in 2017 to honor the sacrifices that were made of those who perished in September 11. A group of young white adults were hanging out at the park, one of them was taking a piece in the bush, in the bushes. 'Hey, this is America,' one white boy said as we passed, as we walked past. 'America,' echoed his white friend. Their other friends said nothing, and my family and I ignored their talks and kept going, but the further away we got, the louder those two became. 'I love King Japun,' he said. I hope my parents didn't hear any of it, but if they did, I hope they wouldn't understand what it meant. My parents are smart people, but I want them to be ignorant, just this once. They came to the United States over 30 years ago as refugees from the Vietnam, from the Vietnam War, and in the decades that followed, learned to navigate language and cultural barriers, while raising a vibrant family. In fact, I drew strength from their experiences in my own professional work, advancing social justice, and I'm doing racism. Yet for all my organizing and advocacy, I regret not being able to shield them from these random acts of violence. Even though this incident spanned about 10 seconds, racism was a sick and nasty way of lingering, racism has a nasty secret, a nasty way of lingering. I am still thinking about it days later. What could I have done differently if I were truly live the moment? One, punch those white boys in the face. Two, insult them a little and they return. Three, don't smart them with my logic and reason and wit. Four, punch them in the face. There was a lot of faces to go around. The two white boys who tried to make my family feel unwelcome clearly did not think through the irony of the situation. I pity them. The white boy who was literally pissing at a 9/11 memorial thought he was more American than us. The other white boy who yelled, 'I love King Japun,' thought he was a patriot. One of my friends told me later, this should not be happening, and even though we, people of color, constantly bring these things up and shed light on them, it still happens. My friend was right, and I was reminded, it's not my responsibility to fix a white person's racism. The only way for our country to sincerely address racism is for white people to stand up and call it out. Those two white boys had friends who were silent through it all, and through their silence and lack of courage, they allowed racism to persist unchecked. That is cowardly. Make no mistake, my family and I were terrorized at the 9/11 memorial or at Front Park. They tried to intimidate us with a few trite words, but my words are much more powerful. I descended from a family of refugees, and I will resurrect this man." So this came from James Pond, is the author, except this, I got this on my, in my mailbox, my email, and I just felt like I had to bring this up, we just, and, and more than anything else, I guess this is not who I want us to be. And I'm hoping that, you know, as a community, we kind of figure out who we want to be. I know, I just came from seeing the Laramie project, I don't know if anything I saw it, but that also dealt with racism and how an incident could get ashamed. And so because of that, like I said, I just felt I needed to bring up who we don't want to be and also speak about who we are, because I know this community is, is very open, especially when the spree comes around. I know we feel, people feel welcome with different diversity issues, and I spoke with one of the people from the spree, they're actually moving to Port Angeles, because I felt this community was so welcoming. Anyway, so I, it was, it struck me, and one of the other things that, and I guess because some of our unhealthy national dialogue that's happening, I feel like we need to speak, speak about it. We can't just push it and not, and not voice it. I don't want us, you know, telling people this is not how you behave, but I just want us to just really think about it, because I think we as people can speak up. I know that the folks who are being taunted don't have as much power as someone who is of the race of the taunter, you know, a white person who, if blacks are really made fun of, a white person can actually have more power to stop that than another black person. So we just need to try to see if we can all have the courage when something like that happens to speak about it, and, you know, and try to help the person who's experiencing this. So I know that research shows that minds are rarely changed by facts, but they are, but they can be changed by stories, and stories are by their nature non-confrontational, allow people to communicate without aggression. And I know that this story made me act, you know, I look back to this person, it made me act, and, and that's the reason I'm bringing it up here, because I think as a city, we need to decide how we want to be. So that's why I brought it up. I don't know if there's any comments from other council members.
Yeah, I appreciate that you brought this up. I actually also emailed the author, as someone brought the article to my attention, and I was planning on bringing it up in my council reports, so I appreciate you bringing it up for this agenda. You know, I was really struck by that one part where
You know, I was really struck by that one part where he said, "It's not his responsibility to fix a white person's racism. The only way for our country to sincerely address racism is for white people to stand up and call it out." And I really think that he is absolutely right on that. You know, I, I think that it would be dishonest of me to say that this, in some way, is not an accurate depiction of our community. I think our community is very open and welcoming, but I think that opinions of the people that were harassing these visitors, they do exist in our community, and that's something that I can't change, but I think that we can, as leaders, work to marginalize those opinions and say, "This is not who we want to be, and if you are interested in harassing, using racial harassment towards visitors in our area, we are going to work to make, to marginalize your, those views." I, I don't think that those views are acceptable, and I do think that a public explanation of that is really warranted in the case of this. And I do think that, I appreciate, you know, our mayor, you know, talking about the ways in which our community is very open and welcoming, I think we have a really great community. And so, those aspects of community need to be highlighted, and these other aspects need to be marginalized, and I think it's our job as leaders to do that, so I appreciate you bringing it up for this agenda item.
Anybody else to put back to that?
Yes, we have a wonderful international community that welcomes visitors from all over the world. I really appreciate our sister-city relationship with Mutsu. It brings children back and forth from Japan to the United States and creates, actually, we're now in second generation of friendships, and it's affected thousands of children and young adults, and I think it's important. We're seen as an open, welcoming city. I'm sorry, some young people were rudin' at the wrong time in the wrong place and weren't taught better, but I, I, this year, I think the 10th year, I've gone down to Welcome at BS Free on the opening night of their convention, and they talk about what a lovely community we have and how they love to come here because they feel that such a, such a friendly environment, they, they feel safe. And I think that's important, that, and I've heard that from visitors all over the world. I know I have been in situations in other states where I have been harassed and by people of another culture when I was in their environment, and I know how uncomfortable and fearful it made me feel. And so, I think we all have a responsibility, we all have a circle of influence, and within our circle of influence, it behooves us whether we're representing our business, our city, we are proud to be from Port Angeles, but Port Angeles was formed as a cooperative colony, so back to our roots, we welcomed people. I think we're doing a good job. I'm sorry this article points out an unpleasant experience by some visitors, but I hope they met other people in Port Angeles, whether it was at a store or in a restaurant or at the visitor's center that made them feel welcome, because we all should strive to do that, and we should take time when we see someone. Now, regarding BS Free, I, I would add, this was a couple of years ago, I was at Safeway when I was standing in line and I watched the clerk, they're waiting on, cashier waiting on someone, and then the next customer in front of me was a BS Free lady, and then it was me, and I watched that clerk, and that clerk was friendly and outgoing with each individual customer, it made no difference, and I went, yes, that's how it works here. So, I'm sad that one family had an unpleasant experience, but we need to take time and reinforce the positive experiences that by example.
I think it's important to not see this as an isolated incident. I also, I mean, I read this article when I popped a Google alert, and then I also went to see the Community Players Laramie Project, and I appreciate the community players being known. And watching the Laramie Project, I thought, boy, this could be the Port Angeles project. And that, you know, a lot of the things that were reflected in that play, the things that I see in our community, the things I see about our community, like where I've lived in that community, that came up there and, you know, it isn't always true. And so, you know, how do we intervene, I think, as leaders of this council? I appreciate that we're having this conversation. And, you know, I, in the past, when there have been incidents in our community, I've gone to the high school and asked the contemporary issues teachers, you know, if you talk about a subject of, you know, what's going on, and I think that's an important spot to go, because I've heard from staff at the high school that students are flashing white supremacist symbols to each other, and that that's, that's cool, and that's not cool at all. You know, when I was in high school here, somebody put the Confederate flag on the flagpole, and the fact that they did that doesn't upset me, it's the fact that it took hours for the school staff to take it down. What upsets me more is that I didn't just go down and take it down, because, you know, I was just waiting for somebody else to do it. So, you know, we as a community are responsible for this, you know. We're like the park that did, but it's our community.
And, let's see, I just, I just needed to bring this up. It's true that the Laramie Project really, really got to me, because with this incident, it just, we've got to bring that out.
Council, I wanted to quickly say that I appreciate you brought it up here in this context, because it was brought to my attention by more than one person in the community that they saw the article, and so I do think, as leaders, it's important for us to address all of the aspects of our community, not just the good parts, which are amazing and great. So, I appreciate that you took the time to talk about it tonight.
All right, anything else? Okay, so, the next one, we've been lodging tax.
Metamary and council, at your last council meeting, we discussed the desire to have a lodging tax policy work session, and that was tentatively planned for June 19th, which is your next regularly scheduled council meeting. I learned today that Mayor Brooke would not be able to attend that because she's going to be out of town, and I do think, knowing that she is the council-appointed representative to the lodging tax committee, I think it's really important that she be present for that. So, there's probably some options that we could look at. I think one option is that council does have a think tank scheduled for June 12th, which is next Tuesday. We could certainly work towards having that presentation ready and available for that meeting and plan to take no more than an hour of the think tank meeting on June 12th, if that's something that would be valuable to council, and maybe we'll start with that, and if you need additional options, we can talk about additional options as well.
So, council, what do you think of that as a potential?
I have thought that we already had something else going on, and I do talk something, yeah, it's just, I already thought that we were doing that.
I think, I'm on the same page that we should probably just double check, because there was recent conversation about at least one of our think tanks being hijacked for something else in a, I don't mean that, it was sort of, we need that time and we're going to use it for that, so, but if there isn't already something, I'm fine with using an hour of that time.
So, I believe the think tank that was taken away by staff was set aside for priority setting, and that would be July 12th.
Yes, right, yes, prior decisions. All right, so, is anybody objecting to potentially just taking that first hour of the think tank?
I will be out of town June 11th through the 7th. Bye, I won't be.
And I would want to be available on 12/62.
So, can you make it from 5 to 6 then, to be at least?
From 5 to 6, I can, but it's at 5:55.
All right, so then, if it's okay, then we'll try the 5 o'clock, is that?
Certainly, and I know that, you know, there may, there may be a lot of value in council member Kate also attending the meeting, that she's historically been the chair of the meeting, and so, we could also make something work to start early on, I believe, July 17th, which is a regular, regularly scheduled council meeting, we could make that work as well.
All right, well, what you wrote here is, okay.
Well, it's not Sunday.
No, no, July.
July.
Is that, is that lack of time an issue with lodging tax?
I, I think it is pushing, pushing things pretty tightly relative to RFPs that will go out and opportunities for applications. I think that we certainly could do it. Relative to some of the applicants, if we make substantial policy changes, it might be difficult for them to adapt quickly, and I know that's one of the reasons we need to hope to have it in June, but I also want to be respectful of all council members, and if we can fit it in for everybody, we'll make that happen.
Are we anticipating a large schedule at our next council meeting on the 19th of June? Council member Kate, will you be back? Oh, that's from her, I'm sorry.
You, you could also do it July 3rd, but I will tell you, I will not be present on July 3rd.
Many of us will be on July 3rd.
Yeah, what about the June 26th? Do you already have a work session planned?
We, we do have a very important work session planned for June 26th, and that's not one that I'd be willing to modify at this time.
Would it be worth it to extend it an hour at that point? Because it's a two-hour work session, right? I mean, would council members be okay?
Come on.
I really am not, but I don't think that...
Council, I know that on June 26th, Dan McKean would like to do a comprehensive walkthrough of financial, the financial strategy discussion for the city, and it's extremely important to him, and I know that he has a wealth of information, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to take away from that conversation anyway.
Okay, so, let's finish, July 17th, is that, is that the July 17th or the next Tuesday?
We will plan on July 17th. If we find a time that works prior to that, we'll make it happen.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the agenda, we are on to contracts and purchasing 2018 powerline tree trimming contract.
Good evening, council. The powerline tree trimming contract is a contract that the political division holds and oversees annually. This year, the city received two bids with Asplun Tree Experts Company from Woodville, Washington being a little bigger. This project is one component to maintain the city electrical system and providing reliable service to our customers. City staff like to request city council approval and authorize city manager to sign the contract with Asplun Tree Expert Company, not to exceed $125,000. At this time, I can answer any questions you have in regards to this contract.
Council, any questions?
No, I just want to, it's clearly an important thing, that we, maybe we can walk around occasionally, see trees, woo, let's get on that, because it does get windy here.
I do have one question. I know it's, the rate is $203 an hour for our present three male. Do we, what was the previous year? Because I know for the last couple of years, we're keeping that contract pretty similar.
I think it's consistent in the last couple of years, and I don't have the numbers to completely paint tonight, but it's very similar, the rates.
And I do know that I've got to give absolute, staff is amazing, because I think with the new way of tracking the trees and tracking the GIS and the app, it just, it's made you guys, the whole thing's so much more efficient, you guys have gotten to so many more trees, and so, I just, you know, the work that you guys have performed has been amazing.
You want to make a motion?
All right, council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize city manager to sign a contract with Asplun Tree Expert Company for 2018 tree trimming contract CON 2018-21 at the rate of $203.20 per hour in an amount not to exceed $125,000, and to make minor modifications to the agreement if necessary.
Second. All right, so we have a motion on the table, the second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, we are now on to council reports. Start with Sheri.
I don't even know that. I went to Patrick Downey's funeral. It's been a long day, so.
I also went to the Laramie Project and was really impressed, and it sort of tied into this whole day that had started in the morning with a meeting, and then I went to the long house reception for the 10-year anniversary retrospective, and then went to represent us at, we were invited to a new club that's starting on the Pinnsett College campus called the Social Lights Club, which has a focus on equity in our community, and so it was really nice to be able to participate there, although it's still weird for me when people are like, "Oh, the deputy mayor is here," and I think, I'm just a person, I'm like, "You guys," it's sort of this weird thing, but it was great to be able to go and learn a little bit more about what they're doing and support their efforts in our community. And then, and I did take a moment when they asked someone to say something, to encourage them to participate in our process as well, and be sure to use the opportunities that they have to engage with us, to share their experiences and their concerns in our community. And then I ended the night at the Laramie Project, so it was a very, it was a date that sort of all fit very nicely together. I also finally, seems a little silly as a Crown Transit board member, took a straight shot to Seattle on Saturday, and that was great. It was really nice to just go and not have to worry about driving. The trip seemed so much shorter when I wasn't in the driver's seat with kids in the back. So, we'll definitely try that again, and would encourage anyone who hasn't done that yet to try it. The only other thing, a couple of us went to the, not official opening game of the Lefties, but the first home game of the Lefties at Civic Field last Thursday, that was fun. And Thursday morning, about 7 o'clock, our Lefties player is showing up, we're hosting a player this summer, which was a very short, the kids told a bunch of people, "Oh, we're hosting a Lefties player this summer. Okay, so, let's see about that." So, they talked me into it, so we'll be doing that.
Thanks. So, I had, I was at the farmer's market table, and I really want to thank the farmer's market, farming this amazingly beautiful table of flowers and cookies and drinks and a table clock and all the little cards, and also a thanks to the city manager's office for that part of the spot. And a lot of really productive conversations. After that, I sent the acting email to city staff, which I really appreciate, directed Elka, responding to her complaint and moving about that, and also with acting manager West, talking about that, so I feel like, you know, it was a very useful time spent doing that. It's been a long time since I last went to a meeting, so I guess I'll just cut it short. I really want to recognize and acknowledge city staff, because there's a lot of staff positions right now, and I think maybe about half of our director positions are changing, and that's huge, as well as a major position within departments. So, thanks for everything you're doing during these transitions, and understanding how this is going to be short-lived and transition, and it's going to happen, so perfect for that. And I guess thanks to people who are here, I mean, I'm looking out and seeing a lot of the city council regulars, and I wouldn't mean that as an insult or anything, but it's really important, sitting up here, to have folks, you know, watching and observing and participating, and being the third branch, so to speak, of city government, that we get stuff done when it's the community, the council, and the city staff all working together. So, thank you for being here.
I'm glad to get our jobs. So, Kate and I went to the high school weekend, last Wednesday, seems like one of these, a year, I don't remember if it was last week or the weekend. We met with Mrs. Hopfensdahl. We met with Mrs. Hopkinsdahl's leadership class, and so this time it was really well set up, where we had an audience ready for us with questions. And we just did a Q and A, and it was really good. Had a lot of really good questions from high school students. One of them is very excited about us repaying Craig out of where he lives. So it was a fun time. And then we also had a really, we had a, at my business, we had a great Memorial Day weekend, with a lot of tourists in town, so it's good to see the tourist season kicking off, and we're excited about American residents coming in, marathon, have a whole bunch of Americans coming in, so really busy times, and I don't have much else to say.
Even though I was away for a while, when I got back, I was able to attend to premier social events, and the first one was a fire department pancake breakfast.
Yes.
With all due respect to the First Street Haven, you can have breakfast with the fire department, man, it's first class, it was really, really good stuff. Thanks again, and your staff for putting on a wonderful program. I guess there were about 500 or 600 people that attended that breakfast on Saturday morning, and it was just wonderful turnout of the community, and not bad pancakes either. So it was pretty good, and I enjoyed that. And then on Sunday, I had the opportunity to listen to our very own outdoors gossip columnist at the Northland Vacant History Center, History Tales, on Sunday, the guest speaker was Pat Neal. And, and he's, if you think his columnist is amazing, you ought to listen to him in person, he is just, well, first of all, it's just a hoot to listen to, but his grasp and knowledge of this area is absolutely amazing. He gave a slideshow of the, of the area and history of the Northland Vacant Peninsula that was just extremely entertaining. And to Pat's credit, the church was, it was in church hall, and it was packed with over 110 people in attendance on, on Sunday. And so it was a unique opportunity. So, you know, I'm glad to be back, and thank you for the reality check tonight.
Thank you, Chris. So I did also attend the farmer's market, and there was a woman there that really wanted to bring this up to staff, and she was here. I just, I just to wipe it down, appreciate what you do. But they, I know that we want to try to be like a dog friendly in certain ways, but she really wanted to make sure that we post more, that dogs get the leash, because, you know, there's a couple of people, and I know this happened to my kids when they were little, there was just these two huge dogs, they were always, they're really friendly, well, they were friendly, but the kids were really little, and they got knocked over, and ever since then, they've been fighting against the dogs. And so, and this woman had had, you know, another dog in the neighborhood. So she just really wanted to ask that the dogs get released, and we could put more signs to make sure that people see that. I noticed that she was like, I don't want a pest, and I don't want to call the police all the time, but it's really an issue. So, and I've heard that actually, this is the second, second person that's brought up the dog leash issue. Then the other thing, one of, an idea, was that maybe potentially, we can change some of our permit costs for sustainable practices, you know, whether if someone is trying to do something that's really sustainable, that we would appreciate, that maybe some of our permit fees, like that, that was a suggestion. Another one is that maybe the school board, you know, when they put the bond out, whether we can exempt those that can't do it. Another suggestion was that, that city decision making, you know, the way that sometimes we make okay a potential idea, but then somehow all of a sudden it turns out to be a final done deal, and we're just approving it again. That, that was a suggest, that was a comment made by somebody in the farmer's market, then, oh, composite testing, also the, the composite gets tested, you know, sorry, the compost that we currently have gets tested at Morn Glory, the Garden Glory. One of the things that they wanted was, how come those results don't get posted on the website? So I thought that was a reasonable thing, that, I mean, we're doing the testing, we might as well post those results. And then, let's see, oh, the chamber presentation that's going to happen on Wednesday at 7:00 PM at Erd Burton for the Love of Port Angeles, that's happening, and that sounds like things going to be really interesting presentation. And I guess finally, I'd like to thank you so much for going through all these things that I haven't been able to go through, so thank you, thank you. I, it looks like at the end of the month, you'll have to start having some more time, so, um, that's my point. So, Sue, your report.
Madam Mayor, I, I do have quite a few items this morning, so just bear with me. I think.
Morning, morning.
Thank you.
It's okay, morning's good.
Not yet, not yet. So my apologies, quite, quite a few issues to cover this evening. First, and, and probably most important of the issues, is I'd really like to express staff appreciation for James Burke, who's here sitting with us tonight. James has served the city so well for many years here in Port Angeles, and we're so grateful for all that he's invested in the better development of the Public Works and Utilities Department. This is going to be James's last council meeting, and we're extremely sorry to be losing James, but he has done amazing things for this community, including the CSO project and a number of others that he was responsible for way back when he was in engineering, as well as taking on consistently greater responsibility, stepping up pretty much every year he's been employed here to take on more and to do more for the city of Port Angeles. So I just really want to express appreciation to James, and thank you, James, for your service to the city of Port Angeles.
Thank you, James.
Well, he can't take his son with him. If, if y'all don't know, in 2011, I was the head in charge of the Port Angeles Sesquicentennial Committee. It was our 150th anniversary, and we honored the first baby born in the Sesquicentennial, was baby boy, his baby boy, so can't take your kid, he's ours.
James, thank you. Thank you. Jack, we've done well done, and we thank you for, for everything, and we wish you really good luck, and come visit us, you know where we're at.
I will, thank you very much.
Just book your hotel in advance.
So Madam Mayor, continuing on, I, I know that council member Sherman Warren brought up a desire to have content added to memorandums, and I too seem to recall that that has been brought up in the past, but I just want to confirm that we have a consensus of four council members who would really like to see that implemented into memos, knowing that we have a large amount of ingredients that we're trying to remember to incorporate in memos on a weekly basis. So I absolutely want to make sure that that is something important to a majority of council, and would appreciate just a consensus thought.
Why is it, why is it that you're supposed to be adding that?
I, I believe, I believe the request was that we should add why we're going outside when we choose to go outside for consulting services as opposed to doing something in-house, and why perhaps we don't have the skill sets in-house to cover those.
And, and I'd like to clarify this, because I know this is something I've asked in the past, because it, it does, when we go out and we are paying a consultant a large amount of money that we could have hired someone for, it does sometimes, I think it's a question, gosh, we could have used that for a salary, and then also that person starts just doing one project, but they're doing multiple projects. I do understand that sometimes the, the, the skill is so specific that you just, you can't do that, you know, and so I do understand that. So I'm wondering whether to simplify this, so it's not an onerous task, but it does meet what we want, is that when it becomes, when it's a really specific task that we only use once every year, or once every other year, or something that doesn't make sense, that maybe that, that just gets listed, this is a very specific task, and therefore that's, it's not feasible. But other tasks do seem to come up year after year, that maybe a position could have done it, and so that's, I think, the ask as well, is to try to understand some of these contracts. So, God, you know, if we had lumped those three contracts together, we could have gotten the person, and then that person would have done not just those three projects, but a lot of other projects as well. So, and whether maybe it's a one-year position or not, I, I don't know. So I think that that's the intent behind that, because I know I've had those questions, but I do also understand sometimes it's just a matter of having that very specific knowledge, and it's not worth it.
And just, you know, this is not that hypothetical, if Port Angeles hired a staff attorney that they didn't have on staff beforehand, because they noticed they were spending a lot of money on these specific things. Obviously, that's not real impressive, or a department, but, you know, as a concept, like, that's something that we should be thinking outside the box on some level. I, I also don't think that this is something that we, I'm not interested in making you do more staff work just to play games, just to write it in a memo, so, you know, I, I'm interested in us thinking outside the box and just like, big picture stuff. So I'm not interested in like, a wire in the mail, that just, you know, that requires more work and more oversight on those things, but I am interested in the concept and I love.
If we have a question, we should, we can easily call department head or call you and get with answers if we have a question. That's why we get their package several days ahead, so we can get our question bested. So I can, I can inquire on my own if I need further information. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I would agree with you, on that, this is not information that, that I think I would need, if I needed the specific information on a particular project, I test notes, I test the crap out of her on, on a lot of specific issues, and she's always gracious in answering my questions. And I would like to point out also, the need for special, that it's, whereas these contracts may seem like we're paying a lot of money, and you could put an FTE out here, you have to remember something very clear about this, from an HR standpoint, when we hire a person, we're not just paying the salary, we're paying them benefits and all that additional expenses that go along with hiring a person. And in my opinion, when we can get a specific job done by a consultant or a specialist, it is more efficient from an HR standpoint to do that, rather than try to put another employee on the payroll. So A, I, I don't see the need for additional information in our package, and B, I, I would caution you about what would appears to be a simple solution, which from an HR standpoint is not.
I wouldn't be in support of putting that information on there either, it can be found on your own for one, and number two, if you don't agree with why we're hiring that consultant when it comes up with the token.
My interest isn't the information in every single memo, but the collection of information about how much full-time equivalent staff time we contract out for specific purposes, so that at some point, maybe every year, maybe, maybe after two years of collecting the data, we can go back and look and see, oh wait, when we add up point one, point two, point three, point one, we actually have a half-time of this position, we have a full-time of that position. So if, if collecting in each memo doesn't make sense, then I'm fine with that, but I'd like us to look and see, because, you know, yes, there's a job cost, but there's also those HR costs when we hire CH2M Hill, pay them a lot more and get a product that isn't localized to our place, and isn't done by the people who really care about this place. So I see a lot of benefit in our own staff doing work. You know, we saw that with the cost of service assessment for utilities last year, that had previously been hired out, and staff did it internally this year, and they said, wow, we, maybe we did a better job than those people we paid a lot more to do it outside, and they got it done and checked out the project and billed us. So there's a lot of benefit to having staff internally, and we can accomplish the HR cost of that. So that's my interest. If it doesn't make sense to be in each individual memo, I totally understand that, but if we don't collect the data when we're thinking through the professional service contract itself, then we're not going to record it, and then we're not going to go back and collect it all together and be able to legalize it.
So just, just to be clear, I, I think staff fully understands the intent behind it. Note too that there may be some other ways to go back and capture that data. The goal is just to verify consensus is, is all we were trying to do.
So does that give you maybe a potentially different way of doing this item?
I, I think there probably are some other, other potential ways of, of arriving at the same information without necessarily including it in every single memo, and we're happy to discuss that as staff and see what, what other ways might make sense. So we'll, we'll proceed in that direction, if that's okay. So the, the next item I was hoping to get clarification on is it was staff's intent tonight as part of our presentation to incorporate the biosolids item into the capital facilities plan into the parking lot. I know that wasn't clarified perhaps in the motion, but we just want confirmation that that was the intent of the motion maker, was to also incorporate that item for the capital facilities plan adoption.
Yep. So do you need a motion modified?
That, that's sufficient, thank you. Yeah. The, the next item that I wanted to bring up was council did request that we schedule, work with Department of Ecology to schedule an opportunity for them to come and present to council relative to stormwater. And so Department of Ecology is willing to come out. They have suggested a first date of July 3rd for a time when they would come out and make a presentation to city council. And I think council member French might be laughing, because I'm also not present that day, but maybe not.
I mean, I, I can make that work, but it seems like a bad date.
Yep. We, we can also ask them for additional possible dates.
We do have a council meeting that night, so if we won't have form, that's a bigger issue, if everyone's, okay.
I don't do anything, so.
Yeah, okay.
So in addition to that, they have committed to holding a public meeting here in Port Angeles relative to the additional elements of our stormwater permit, and that public meeting they plan to have in August in Port Angeles, but a date has not specifically been set yet. But we wanted to pass along that that conversation was had with Ecology. They will be here for a presentation. If there are any specific questions, I know some of you have already provided questions to staff to be passed along to Ecology to have answered at that presentation. If there's other questions, we'd be happy to receive those and pass them along to Ecology for that presentation.
Is there a timeline at all from Ecology, when they kind of release the final document? Have they released a draft from last year?
Yeah, I perceive that they've slowed it down, and that I anticipated that by August they probably would have been adopted, but it doesn't appear to be the case, and they may have extended the timeframe.
Like, are you talking about July 3rd being at our council meeting?
At your regularly scheduled council meeting. And, and we could certainly try to do a five to six timeframe on that as well, so it's more of a work session, if that's preferred.
No, I think it can be interesting to the public. I mean, we're all paying for stormwater, I think that.
Yeah, and that's kind of why I stopped, is because that seems like a bad date for the public. Like, if I have a council meeting, then I'll be here and I'll be ready, but I certainly think they're going to get less public participation on the July 3rd council meeting than at a new random council meeting. I don't think that's.
Well, I think, I don't disagree, and I think if the purpose of that one is to give a presentation to council, there's not going to be public input in that presentation. There would certainly be the public's opportunity to hear it, which is useful, but given that they're willing to come back, because if they're, if the only time they're giving us is July 3rd, we should probably take it, and then knowing that they're going to come back in August, and we can make sure that we help publicize that.
Great. The, the next item is there was a suggestion provided on an upcoming webinar regarding residential infill development, and we do think that will be a good webinar. I think that it would be helpful to staff if we can work towards getting perhaps three council representatives to go to one training exercise, so that we, we would anticipate that we could probably come up with one train every single week that all of you might have interest in going to. And what we're trying to avert is having to notice a special council meeting for every single week or every single opportunity that arises. single week or every single opportunity that arises. So unless the item is really important to council, if it is really important to council, we will make it happen, we will notice that meeting and make it work. But in an ideal world, if we can just agree on the three attendees that might attend that and we will make sure that there's a conference room available to you to watch that webinar and that the associated fees will be paid.
Yeah, that's what I would like to know. One of the reasons with that one, it's on infill development and tailoring that to your specific community. For me, that's one of the major long-term solutions to available and affordable housing in our community. It's the sort of thing that I would like us to use as kind of getting on the same page on best practices, so that we can like have a more important conversation among ourselves. And honestly, maybe something that we, I know there's some disagreement on this, but doing convention with the planning commission, although a number of council members have an interest in seeing this stuff go through the planning commission potentially before it comes to the council. So, you know, we need to have a lot of conversations about this in order to be forward on housing issues and that was my thought, is that it should be a sort of presentation that is, you know, as much of us as can make it and potentially by the planning commission as well.
What's the date for that?
The date is Thursday, June 21st, June 1.
And I must admit, I really actually like the idea of extending this to the planning commission, specifically because it is on planning issues that are really important to us. And hey, if they want to come, I don't think that there should be an issue, this is just a matter of education.
Not to speak for the staff, but they're saying like, they could just put us in a conference room rather than having to know, see, they can make sure that it's available. So I guess we would need to decide, if you want to notice this meeting, I'll be here.
How many folks are interested in this webinar? Any interested?
I'm interested, I don't know for sure that I can come, I don't, so I'd have to check.
Right, and that's exactly where I'm at. I would be interested, but I'm trying.
I'm basically, yes. I also want to note that members of the audience who are in this room.
Okay, so, and if we are in a conference room, I mean, the planning, I mean, so keep it a secret, Jack Pittis, right? Is that what you were thinking potentially?
It makes no difference where we locate it, you know, to me, I think the key point that I'm going for is do we have four council members interested in this or just three? And then we can, we can find a room that works. We can also make sure we invite the planning commission and we take the same approach with the planning commission. If there's four or more planning commissioners that want to attend, we'll make sure it's an open planning commission.
Okay, that sounds great. So I can get back to you guys tomorrow to let you know for sure whether we can make it. If you can check your schedule as well. Yeah, and then, yeah, it's a very interesting one.
I am, and if it does end up getting public notice, I just want to ask to include the possibility of discussion without an action afterwards, so that we can have that conversation afterward.
Council, we need two more quick items. So I did hear relative to the think tank, as we were debating whether that might be an opportunity for the lodging tax discussion, there was a little bit of a discussion about moving up the timeframe to accommodate one council member. So think tank start time for next week on June 12th is what I'd like to confirm next.
I thought we said July 17th.
Just for our normal...
We usually start by...
July 17th will be the lodging tax discussion. However, there's still a think tank scheduled for June 12th. And I heard one council member say it would be better if it started at 5:00 PM as opposed to the 6:00, I can't remember what the standard is, 5:00, sorry, 5:30 start time.
Okay, so even me on behalf now. So 5 o'clock then, think tank, 5 o'clock?
The think tank goes for two hours.
Yes, so...
Fifty-five of that.
Yeah, so we'll take whatever we can get.
Make that clear.
We want to take it personally.
That's right. Okay, 5 o'clock, thank you.
And the last one, just a favor that I'd like to pass along, it's Ms. Recky's birthday today, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Allison. Happy birthday to you.
For your birthday, we got you another meeting about the comp plan at the planning commission.
I really feel like that is the best gift ever seen.
You're not going to get the next week eight different emails from me with this kind of gifts. Happy birthday.
All right, so you're all in? So we are now up to the second public comment period of the night. So anybody in the audience who would like to get up and speak, please state your name and address for the record. We would love to hear it.
Hello, my name is Naomi. Naomi Davidson, my address is 310 North N.A. Street. I thought I wanted to speak because this is my very first council meeting attended and it's very interesting to see the conversations happening all over the place. And I also wanted to speak to the subject about racism. I feel like as a community, as a whole, say 80%, we can say we're welcoming and all of that, but because of the 20%, there are people who have had bad experiences in our community and I feel like that really needs to start with our youth. I would love to see that article passed out to all of the high school students, just to generate conversation. Because in my experience, I've learned that when you get a lot of people on a subject, the one and two that don't agree kind of stand out and that's really powerful and youth, they want to fit in. So if there is two or three that are being very racist and very honorary to the other races, they will stand out. And I think if we, as a community, say that this is important to us, to be welcoming to have a blind eye for color, race, creed, whatever, then that will tumble down to our students. So I just wanted to share my thoughts on that.
Thank you very much and welcome to the city councils. Thank you.
John Rolson, Field Box 890, Port Angeles. Just wanted to go on the record, thanks for doing your thing on the comp plan. I think the document is fine, it meets the state's guidelines. Can it be improved? Yes, a lot of things in the world can be improved. Okay. I think you should advertise to the public about this webinar, particularly those that are property owners. I'm not going to advertise, I can give you a couple of names of people that should be there. There was a meeting in April, the councilperson, French, brought up the RCW 8414, deals with deferment of taxes. I've spoken to Pam Rushton, County Treasurer, excuse me, County Assessor. She's spoken to the state and it's something that the city should move forward on or look at for people that want to develop, in particular, it's a deferment of taxes, but it can be, could be advantageous for those that wish to develop apartments, et cetera. And of course, Nathan and Allison know that I have some property that would house a tremendous amount of apartments, so thank you. Excuse me, the 8414 takes some action by the city to work with the county to go to the state or something like that, so you guys can follow along.
What's that RCW number again?
8414, I believe that's the number.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council? All right, for that, we are adjourned. Thank you, Scott.